Good evening, welcome to the June eighth board meeting. Start with the roll call.
Here.
Michael.
Thomas.
Brother.
Neil's absent tonight, Kim. Grant's here. Uh, let's move as we officially call the order and move the slides loop.
Suspicious to like husky colors.
All right, first opportunity for public input on for items on the agenda. So if there anybody online, please put your name and email uh in the chat and we'll. In that order. We don't have anybody signed up in the room, so.
No one, no one's gonna be in.
Alright, so we're gonna move to add three addition deletion to the agenda. We have an addition of expenditure for a CTE vehicle and six F. Uh resignation, go into vetting and head basketball coach Derek Pringles four D. And bridge to college contracts for F. Uh, can I get a motion to, there's no discussion, a motion to approve the additions to the agenda?
Great.
You got. Thomas seconds.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Alright, items added. So moving to the consent agenda. Um, the folks had a chance to read through extensive agenda items. For any questions about any items, minutes, vouchers, hiring resignations. At the second reading of policies, bridge college contracts. Any, any discussion on any of those items?
I'd be interested in just a little bit more background on the assistant principal at high school. I saw the hire happen, but.
Yes, um, the assistant principal from the high school, for the high school. And I have Justin help me out because I was not very involved in the process. Um, but she comes to us with experience from Othello School District. Hopefully, it's will district. And Poland.
I saw the Poland, that's, I didn't know what happened before Poland, so, okay.
Yes, and so she's been um in our state um and has been worked in a variety of different capacities and um. Wanted to get back in into the area and so she comes to us with experience and I think she's gonna be a good fit for. For the high school and somebody who is described by one of her former superintendents as being. Like an easy to talk to person, somebody that um other, you know, staff members and parents will find really easy to have conversation with. And um. Just bonds quickly with people.
Did I miss, where is Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Wilson is going to um work at heart, so he is going to be.
Oh, so he was the one that we talked about, what, two weeks ago? Yes, okay, okay, okay.
So many moving pieces.
Yeah, cuz I just, I spoke, I had to speak to him on the phone a couple of weeks ago. And so, okay. He's still, he'll still be here. Okay, any other? Questions or? Alright, if there are none, could I get a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
I'll do it.
Thanks, Thomas, for your second. Thanks, Warner. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda approved. Alright, moving to old business, uh five A, uh some updates around building security. Uh, some updates on some research and work you guys have done.
Ed is on his way.
Okay, well, why don't we do this? If you would just entertain me for a minute, can I show some slides from things, some activities around the district first?
Sure.
And we'll wait for Ed, who's, who's coming in here in a minute. So, this will be fun. Now I have it large enough that I can share my screen.
I think you have photos, now you might love to share.
I'll get it there, hold on.
Okay. It takes. Okay, I'm gonna admit something.
There you go.
There he is.
So, um, just some happenings from around the district in the last week or so, we've had a variety of transition activities. This happens to be a picture of fifth graders who went from Grand Mount Elementary to the middle school to have their orientation. About what middle school is like, families have been invited to orientations as well, so. And we've had fifth graders go to the middle school, we have had eighth graders with opportunities to visit high school. And um. Second graders will, I can't remember if they've gone earlier this week. Earlier this week that they went and visited Grand Mount. So you have an opportunity for all of our students to have a transition experience. And the other thing that happens is in the lower grades, K three, five. On the last day of school, kids will meet their next year's teacher. So they'll go visit the classroom, meet their teacher, reduces a lot of anxiety for kids over the summer. And so that has been um exciting to have this work happening.
Another.
Teacher's not here.
Then we have somebody that fills in for that. Was excited to have a future chess competition in this year, so students increased three, four, and five were eligible. Thank you, were eligible to submit recipes uh for this future chef's competition. And this is the, the picture of the students who participated this last year. There, um, they had to submit a recipe that had a theme that tied to a book or. So it had some connection there, so some of our little chefs. Busy at work, they come to the high school kitchen after school. And prepare their food, Sedexo buys all the groceries from their list that they submit in their ingredient list. And then they put it together and then there is judging taste, you know, there's tasting that happens. And this um is our future chef champion.
That's a great name.
Yeah, Sailor Watch.
Kim, who is, who's, this is great, we've, I think, taken turns as board members going and judging, it's been a ball until you have to eat mushrooms or something. While you haven't been invited back. What, who needs to that, so now, like, who's our primary person since our friend left, right?
Really, really super good question. Um, Galena Dobson is our current um. Person who is our general, is the manager over our Sedexo branch, she also um serves in Chehalis.
Okay.
However, Aaron. Bradford, that we, you said two Aaron's, both started, last name started with B, so I stopped to stop. Aaron Bradford, who was previously here, left, he's coming back. So on July first, he's gonna come back and work. And he'll oversee our, our food service operations here since Friday at Chehalis. If you guys remember Aaron, amazing. Selena was great.
Yeah.
We always knew she was kind of in this in- interim position. And it's super exciting to have Aaron back, he does such nice work with his employees.
Yeah.
And um.
Well, he's very visible too. So even though the first part was too COVID time, we never saw him, so.
Yeah.
He'll be back here.
That's great.
Thank you.
Few more pictures, um, first grade had field day today at the primary school, they had great fun. It was a joy to be over there for a while, and the weather held, so that was delightful. Yes, there's another group tomorrow, I think it's, is it Kinders tomorrow? Yeah. So sure, they can be quite as fortunate. And then last night was senior awards night, beautiful. Right there. Front and center, anyway, our um graduates were offered over three million dollars with the scholarships. Um, many cases, they were multiple offers to various colleges, and so kids won't be able to cash in all three million dollars worth of that. One, one student in particular had half a million dollars with the scholarship offer.
Wow.
It's pretty phenomenal. And the Rochester Scholarship Association gave forty sixty thousand dollars.
Was it, I can't remember the number, it was eight or ten bilingual students?
I think it was closer to ten.
Yeah, it was, I was, I was really neat.
They got certificates or something.
certificates I get for college credit.
Yes, certificate for my literacy. A lot of, of our Hispanic students received incredible amounts of scholarship money. Teacher doctors and scientists and teachers and all kinds of folks in the crowd.
And if you wanna rewatch it, it's available. All hour and fifty minutes.
Or you can watch it in fast forward.
Start at minute twelve.
Um, and then just final, just a reminder, graduation Friday night for our Harvard student, six thirty. That's a different start time if you're somebody who normally goes, six thirty start time in the Rochester High School. And then Sunday at St. Martin's at two P M. Alright, so now I'm getting.
So Grant, you all prepared, you got your hug ready and your.
Did you get a little handshake? She's trying not to be a ball baby up there.
It can be tricky, no, nobody's gonna fault you for that. Alright, so we um. Ed, I'll just be honest, Ed's mostly been doing this work, he has worked with Ray Towne, who is the managing principal architect for Erickson McGovern. Um, some of you have been part of the district for a while, know that Erickson McGovern um designed three of our four schools. And um, there are go-to people for like re, like if we're gonna remodel or something that um is part of the. Current floor plan of our school, they know the ins and outs cuz they signed them. And so Ray was really great to do some speedy work for us, and so we reached out with, to him about what can we do to increase security in our schools. Before we go too much further, I do want to say that, you know, there's possible funding coming our way. Um, fed through the federal legislation, so they're still talking that by the end of the week, there could be some type of proposal. And heard rumors that it, it could include some money to secure school district facilities. And security personnel has been floated around and mental health supports as all possible options. And politically, it makes sense because it doesn't touch weapons and. You know, all the, the debate about second amendment rights. Um, so if, if they in fact do something, it would likely include something, never know how much it is, you know. Sometimes it ends up being, here's your five thousand dollars per school, doesn't go very far, other times it can be pretty substantial, so. Just to know that, that that's kind of looming as a possibility. And what I want us to be thinking about particularly tonight is what direction you would like to move. When it comes to securing main entries. So really there, as I see it, there are two primary options. One is to continue to have a single front entry, not a vestibule. Have a single front entry which we, so keep our existing front doors and um add video camera buzzing systems. And to those card access control that are already there. And so people come up, they ring the bell, the video shows their face, makes them hold up their ID, whatever. Um, it's viewed by, on a computer screen by, we, we would put on at least two office workstations. Um, and then you buzz open the door. So that is one option that will cost us approximately twenty-five thousand dollars.
How, for school? First school?
About five thousand.
How does that work if uh? One of us come in, like, we don't have cards.
Oh, no, you, you just buzz.
Yeah.
Ring a doorbell.
Yeah.
And they like. Hello, how can we help you? And, and you show up on a video. Yeah, so a parent or anybody would just. You would, we would see your face and say, hi, Michael, just a second, let me buzz you in.
Yeah.
If it's not somebody we recognize, you ask what their business is, you check their ID, you, you would do all the things you would do if they came into your office.
Okay.
To see if they were safe to enter through the second door, if you had a vestibule, they would come into the office, you would do all that. In the office as opposed to outside. And then you would have, send them through the second door, doing the vestibule situation um. Where you create that second access point, and I could show you what those would look like and where they would be um. Place, well, it costs about a billion dollars for the district to do that, was an eight month, eight, nine month timeline. So those are the two options. In both of these options, it creates a very secure front. But we still have not very secure grounds. So.
With portables.
Yes, and so we'll talk a little bit more about that because you, you know, we can make it for knocks out front, but if we could just race around the side.
Because can't you, so at the. Primary school, if I parked in the parking lot and didn't go through the front door. I can go through the center and go, go to the portable without no one ever seeing me, correct?
Yeah, so we definitely have to, so you, we can't just, I just wanna make sure that people are really clear. That just taking care of the front entrances is not gonna do what I think you are wanting to do.
Are, are those portables? Locked while the teachers are in there, teaching from the outside? While we have kids on.
They sure can be, I don't know if they always are.
Okay.
They, they aren't in, my middle schools and high schools definitely are not.
So ti- typically the portables in, in all the buildings, they have a crash bar on them, and the Allen wrench has them open.
Yeah, just like these are regular one round.
Yeah, and then the teachers all have the Allen wrench to quickly lock them down if we need to go to lockdown. But if someone just shows up on campus, no, the doors aren't locked cuz kids. Are in, in most cases are in main buildings. And so, you know, doing this and it's interrupts that teaching flow quite a bit, so at this point in time, no, they're not currently that way. So.
So it, just I want people to keep the whole nature in mind, that we're just taking the front entries tonight.
Now, I, I will tell you that, like, the primary school and elementary school, any, any door that is forward facing and not behind a fence. Is locked and shut at all times, besides the very front, besides the front door. So the, the, the door down by where the, where the primary students go out to the buses. That, that door, that door is locked, it's, it's never unlocked, it's always locked, in fact, i- if you're an adult. You'd have to have a key to get in that even when buses are going.
So, so at the primary school, if you walk in the front door, go past the office, you go, you keep going straight through. That leads out to the portable.
Not if you go in.
No, no, I know that, but.
Yeah, that does.
But that door back there, what about that door? If it, if it closes. It's open, it opens, so it's free access. So anybody could come through that, that door right there, what about the one over at playground? At the recess area, it's the same way. So those are the things.
Yeah, and so we'll talk later as I go through this about different options, like kind of the pros and cons of various things. And so if, if you did the full-on vestibule out front, this is that process. So it needs to go to, through the design process with permitting to Thurston County. Um, we need to go up to bid, once the specs are, are developed, what we would go out to bid for that project. And um. So you can see the price there for what it would cost per school to just do the specs. And then um, the architect says we need to have, there's a requirement by law for two weeks. For bids to be available, um, to accept bids for at least two weeks, and you have to advertise, etc. He said three weeks is really um required anymore to give people enough time because contractors are so busy. They need that extra time, then we'd select a contractor. Um, once you select a contractor, they are gonna need about two months to actually procure the, the equipment. And the supplies they need to do the job. So that's taking a long time right now to, to get the electronics, to get whatever building supplies that they need. And then about two to three months, if we're doing after-hours construction. Meaning if it's during the school year and not done during the summer, and they just can only work on evenings. It's gonna take about two to three months to make it through the four schools. With an estimate of about two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars per site. Grandman will be less, cuz I'll show you what that looks like, high school will be more, but he thought it would balance out to about that.
But this would be still just for the vestibules for the front.
Yes.
So it wouldn't.
Take care of any, any of the other part of it.
Yeah, so.
So Kim, before we move further on that slide right there, I reference to money, if I'm not mistaken, from what. I believe I heard Jill say uh two weeks ago that we had a million dollars that can be spent on this, is that correct?
Yes, we have at least more than a million dollars that can be spent on this. Yes, so, yes.
Do we also have any COVID money left over that can? That somebody can tell us if we can use that money on whatever it is that we wanna use that money on, if it's in reference to this or whatever.
We can't use COVID money on this.
Yeah, that's our money, yeah.
The only way I'm getting, the only information that I'm getting was where I saw that on the news, and they said, you know. Wherever these states can use this money on, I mean, they were talking about other stuff.
Yes.
Not even nowhere near related to COVID.
There, there is a whole variety of things, but the only thing in the construction, like. Building site um domain that is allowable expense is. Things to improve air quality. Because of COVID, so like, we'll ha, we'll work on a HVAC system improvement at the high school that we'll use COVID money for. So what we can do, are there other things that we can spend that COVID money or S R funds on that can free up? General line money that can then go to something like this, so it's more of a switch in order to be able to follow all the rules. So this is a, a quick example of what's. This is the primary school. Um, this is what they, they would propose, this is the, the exterior foyer, main doors to the school here. Um, what would happen is. Guests would come in of their, you know, be checked, and then um, they would. Head back in the hallway through this door here. And then uh this other door, this one would remain locked, or it would remain closed and locked from the outside. You could always go from the outside, from the inside out, that makes sense. And, and this is one of those doors that would be. Open during entry time for students to be able to quickly flow through, cuz you wouldn't push your whole student body through your office. But once the school day starts, then the set of doors here locks. So I think this one is not too surprising about like how that would be configured, and most people had an idea for that one. This is um Grand Bound Elementary School, and this is the, the area that doesn't cost very much. And this is the main sidewalk here to the main door of the school. It is adding a second uh set of doors right um before the office. And so there, they happen to have a window here. To the secretary's desk, and so the person would just check in here and get buzzed through. So that is Grand Mount.
And what event would they get buzzed in, like if it's a parent, cuz, because parent, if someone's gonna come pick up their child, they're just gonna wait in the office. So they really wouldn't have to let them in.
Right. Are you talking about like under what examples?
Parents would be posted too, cuz they need to sign the kids out.
Okay. They're driven down the office already, it's not into the uh, but you're right, getting into the main part of the school. We have current volunteers.
Okay.
And we have um, you know, occasional delivery.
Readers, yeah, okay. We'll come in and read, okay.
You're picking up a sick kid, you're, you're just waiting for them.
But parents come to like I P conferences or things, meetings with the teacher. Oh, sorry, I took my middle school. So middle school, this is the main entry.
Main entry stuff.
Oh, thank you, main entry here. Uh, main entry here, this is the current door that parents used to go into the office. And this is extra set of doors here, and pushes parents through this existing door here. Through here, checking in, and then around this way. The high school. So high school is tricky.
Kim, can you go back to the middle school?
Yes.
They, based, based on, based on that one, I, I'd almost look at putting another locked door. Um, before, so you can't just, so you'd have to go left to go into the office, and you can't just go right. Back to the principal and counselor's office.
Oh, yes, agreed, that we likely need to have that door right in here.
Yeah, a, a locked door that.
Yeah.
And that's just a straight, I, I've only been through that.
Yeah.
Little area, once or twice, and I don't remember if there was a door, I mean, I know that the door leads into there, but I didn't know if there was one already there.
To get into, into the whole office.
Yeah.
Not that you can't jump the counter and all that other stuff, but, you know, I try and.
Yeah, they would need it.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah.
And then the high school is here, and so. Get my earrings about me again.
Don't they already have a camera at the middle school by the front door?
It's not a buzz.
Yeah, but they have a camera there though. That just came to mind, I was like, I thought there was a camera there too, though.
So this is the, this is the front entry of the school, sorry, on my screen, the. The toolbar for Zoom keeps popping up and covering what I'm supposed to be showing you. So um, there are two sets of double doors, this is the exterior foyer. Um, two sets of double doors, you would come in through this set on the left. And this is the current waiting area, they would put another door in the waiting area, go back through this way. So that's the configuration there. Alright, so talked about. The, the, drawing the specs, you said there are some of the, the questions that would cause fluctuation in, in costs, etc. Around, can we connect existing card access systems, cameras, those types of things. Keep moving along here, and these are those other additional pro, um, projects I think that would need to be considered. And first of all, middle school, elementary grade buildings. You think about them differently in terms of risk, so when you think about risk, like if you're talking about. You know, potential violent shooting situations, the risk is almost always comes from outside. So securing your site makes a lot of sense. When you talk about middle schools and high schools, it's a toss-up about whether the threat is within the system. And whether, or whether the threat's coming into the system.
Cuz they're older.
Yes.
And they have more access to other stuff.
Yes, and so when you think about middle schools and high schools, you have to think really carefully about how much you want to. To fortify the exterior of your grounds, because you can trap kids in a dangerous situation. Does that make sense? So if you have, you know, you have a gunman inside your building. And you need people to flee to safety if they're all trapped within that, because you've done such a good job of, with your perimeter. That can be dangerous, so there, there are things you have to think about differently for secondary schools than, than um. Elementary schools, so. Some of the things that could, can be considered for the primary school, um, adding key card access to your back doors. So that it can be locked all the time. In those situations when kids need to go from a portable to the office, that the classroom pass. Has a key card.
Yeah. That makes.
Um, and what you do is our, our gates that we have become locked. From the parking. So right now they're gated, but people can walk through them, it's a high latch, so our littles can't open it up on their own, but it's not secured. So um, primary school is a secured perimeter, um, but would need. Primary school is a secured perimeter, um but would need five exterior key card lock systems. Um, Grand Mount Elementary School would need two, maybe three exterior, additional exterior um. Locks and some additional fencing. A middle school would, if we wanted to lock those doors and do the same thing with a pass type system. Much more difficult at middle school level, there are districts who do it. They would, they would need four, and you know, we can talk about considering fencing, but there's that issue again. Are you trapping kids in? And then high school. Really, I I think the best. Option for our high school kids right now would be to have additional staff supervision. A person on campus always working on security.
So with the, with the high school, when you're talking about cutting things off, you could come in. That left, that left door. And it's blocked in right there. How do you keep the other door? From uh. It being left open mistakenly, accidental, whatever, the one that goes to the band, that other set right there?
You would have to. That's, that's another reason why you would have a security person.
Okay.
Constantly walking around, because kids prop doors open all the time.
Oh, yeah.
And that campus is so, um, it's a campus, it's not a single building, it's campus, and so. It it's, it's just not practical to have all the buildings locked down. Because you would have to issue every kid a key card and that is not a practical. System.
Well, actually, that's what I was thinking.
Does every kid a key card?
Yeah, at at that level. Not like, not by the end of this year, but I'm I'm saying that's something that I think we should.
I think the.
Progress to.
What the um. Like the plans for the expansion and of campus, the modernization expansion. Add all kinds of safety features where that we wouldn't have to issue a key card, they would be contained. Within a a a campus, kind of in very, excuse me, with the campus would be contained.
Kim, I think you brought, I asked the same question, I think Thomas last time, and you had a response to it, but. Why not have the high school kids have key cards, you're afraid. As, has there been experience where they just lose them too often, or why don't we have the kids?
Yeah, they they dump them to school, they. They give them to other people, you you definitely have to set these systems where the key cards only work between certain hours.
There's a huge security risk of them handing key cards off to people that don't need them, and now some people get access, and now instead of having. You know, certain number of people having key cards and access, you don't have six hundred people with access.
So like you go to a different school.
Yeah.
But you're my friend, I'm gonna give you my key card, you're gonna sneak into this.
And believe me, they figured this out on Zoom, because they were sharing Zoom links with other. Time, so don't think they're not gonna figure this out with key cards.
Did you have the cost for that, what is that, that security person, is that? Uh, a school, uh, high school and uh employee, or is that an outside somebody?
My suggestion is that it's a high school. That that we don't incur the expense of having a commissioned officer. Or somebody that's regular security, I think we just need somebody who's. Check indoors, check in bathrooms, watching kids come in.
I know we need to check the bathrooms a little bit more.
So, um. Yeah, so considering the. Just the dynamics of a high school, I think that would be the thing that would create the most ability to keep that building safe in its current configuration. It's more staffing. Again, we can add the access. Where people have to, after hours, you have to get buzzed in, so it would be that plus this. Additional staffing or additional, um depending on the school.
Well, regardless if we do vegetables or we just do the. The buzzing, you would still have an additional person, just because I think I saw that in a slide.
And the additional person was just at the high school.
Oh, for the supervision, okay, I'm sorry.
So when. There's, there's been a few years, so I know in middle school they change classes, but not in elementary school, they they stay all the same.
And they stay with their class, they move various places across the campus, but with adult supervision.
With adult supervision.
They're all.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so um right now, when from the middle school and the high school, when kids are moving between classes. Who is out in the hallways? Not teachers, I know teachers are trying to get ready for their next class, so on and so forth. What administrators? Are out.
So we ask our teachers to be at the door, right, during classes changes, for extra sets of eyes. And and then administrators, unless you're in with a hot situation, you're out in the hallway. And then there's a variety of classified staff as well, who are out there helping to supervise, it's kind of all hands on deck.
And we only have one uh deputy, correct?
For all four schools. So this would give you an idea, like if we were to fence at the middle school. Yellow is existing fencing, we would have, it's, it's not a lot of fence at the middle school to keep the front of campus secure. And the backside of campus has. A pasture fencing on one side, and then is a chain link on the backside.
Kim, I have, I was reminded that our E L kiddos, our high cap kiddos, they do move independently of intervention kids. They do move independently without adults, even at K two, one, three, and three, five, so they're not. You know, when they move off to some smaller groups, like this kid was gonna go get a service. Then they.
So they're on their own.
Yeah, yes, there are dozens of them there.
So, okay.
So that this is what middle school would look like if we fenced it, I'm sorry. So which direction I'm going.
And behind the middle school, there's only, what kind of fencing is back there?
There's six foot chain link fence, and there's four foot chain link fence, and then there's also pasture fence on.
Has animals.
Yeah, we we're having some problems with a property owner. Over here, um but I'm not exactly sure where that individual's property backs up. Against it, probably, I don't think it comes up to the school, though. That's why I'm asking, because I'm I'm that area between where I work at. And there's a duplex in the back there. And I'm not sure where the school grounds.
So the yellow is the existing fence.
At the middle, at the elementaries, Grand Mount Elementary, yellow is existing fence, red is, this is not the way the fence line would work. This is the end of this photo. So uh. There's a giant field over here, what in this area that would be this blue, there's field over there, and um. There really is some fencing that would need to happen across this on the side to just basically close that section of the playground. So this school would require access, um new access. Card lock here, one over here. And um then fencing to get the the site.
Kim, there's, there's uh. Yeah, fencing is a bit of a deterrent, right, people have to jump over or cut through or whatever. There are there cameras on the fence lines at all, or probably not at this point.
You don't have any camera fencing doing.
There's some sketch roadways, but I mean, as far as on a, it's a stroke property line, no.
So from the. Backside of the primary school. The wood line that runs all the way up to where the practice football field and and everything is. Is there any fencing along any of that, I'm not familiar with that part.
That we we just, that's one of the the property lines we just secured was the east property line.
Okay.
Away from James Road, all the way back to the high.
Oh, okay.
That's six foot chain link fence, that's all security.
Okay, okay.
So. I think that is all the slides that I had to kind of show you. This evening, but really, we need to make some decisions around if you want. Continued action to happen. The, the preference between. Using um. You know, single point of entry. System versus a vestibule system, knowing that there's also this other fencing and. Key card access that would need to happen. To to complete most of these sites.
Well, I'm gonna make a suggestion that we go with both of them. Um, because we, you need both, you need both physical security and both. Techno- technology. And I think they both work hand in hand.
So you wouldn't do both of these options?
I would.
It wouldn't make any sense to do that if, I I think maybe.
Well, yeah, secure and off, securing off the the entry points and everything.
So this would take care of, you would choose one or the other to take care of your main entry. And then the perimeter work. It's just like, which option do you want for the entry?
Well, I would, well, still, I would. I'd go with the physical security.
The second set of doors.
Yes. I like that first, physical security is is gonna be a um. A good slowdown for somebody. Uh, it's just like if you put tanglefoot out there. Around your place, it's gonna slow somebody down, so I I like physical security, but.
The thing I want you to remember, I'm not trying to sway your decision, but I just wanna make sure you understand that both of these. Like are a physical security, so one of them is the first door is locked. And so that's your physical security, the other is that first door is not locked in the vestibule situation, the first door is wide open. You allow people into your office, and then the security is at the second door. So in some ways, the blue solution actually is protecting.
Why can't we do both, though?
Yeah, and it costs, the cost is.
Oh, you could, you could.
You can't.
Oh, you're right, you could, we would need more staff.
I just wonder how much if if. You're stopping somebody at the front door, they're on a camera, so you can see them. Before you let them in. Uh, what additional security do you gain between that and then?
You can never have enough security.
Uh, just I'm 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 gonna argue that point uh till I'm blue in the face. I I learned in the military, security has got to be number one at all times. I don't disagree with that. At all times, and I don't, I don't think there's any amount of money that we should. I mean, if it's making it painful on somebody to come in the door and have to buzz in twice, so be it. I very personally, I really don't care. That's just how I feel about it. There can be a never be enough security. To go around, uh, I don't know how else to.
But I.
I don't know else to say.
I don't disagree with what you said, but I a hundred percent agree with, there can never be enough security.
Yeah.
That's, that's our problem, there can never be enough security.
I just, I just feel if we, if we, so here's how I'm thinking, if we, if we block off these entrances, you know, once you get inside the school and everything. I still think there's, there's gotta be, uh, maybe I'm just thinking it from a different aspect, but I mean, it's. There, there needs to be both, that's just how I.
Yeah.
How I see it, um. Um, I understand you buzzing in through that, through that front door. Um, and then you don't buzz in through the front door if you, if you don't get the. That stuff, um.
Yeah, is it, I I hear you saying, I'm trying to find a balance between. What's gonna be impactful, uh, what's still gonna make it feel like a school and welcoming and, you know, and not a. It's not Maple Lane School, it's.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Oh, maybe take the other side of this a little bit, Thomas, I, I think the first one. Cause really what we're doing is a screening, right, and so you're screening. Now, could somebody have something hidden? And say I'm here to pick up my stepdaughter, Jolene, or what, you know, whatever they say. I don't know what the right questions are that you would keep somebody out, right, like ninety-eight percent of the time we're gonna let people in, right, when they say we're here to do whatever. But you're sort of screening at that first point, if we don't do that, when they come straight in, then I think. But honestly, our office staff and the kids volunteers and all those guys are risks, people just block right into them. And so we're kind of protecting everybody by having that first screen. And then I'd use the resources to this other stuff to try to keep the rest of the buildings, I like the key card idea, like all that other stuff. The extra fencing and stuff to kind of keep the rest of it. I don't know what the value add is so much. Like, Thomas. We could buzz people in and then have them go through um. Metal detector.
Metal detectors, yeah.
No, and and that would be more sensible to me than have them worried about that second. Door so much, but I don't know, it it's all hard because it's all. It's tough, right, it's how much. So I I kind of lean towards the blue and then see what else can happen, but I don't know.
In the same way, because the single door buzz, it's gonna be the same, you're not gonna have access to it unless somebody else. Lets you in, which is the same as a vestibule. You, you get through.
We're gonna have to set up. Um, if you go with that, then there's gonna have to be set up of who, like Michael was just saying. Who do you allow in? You know?
That's gonna have to be regardless.
Yeah, I think they're gonna be at the front desk or.
Yeah. So uh, there's gotta be parameters, you know, okay, well, you have to wait outside, if you're not a parent or a guardian. Hang outside, make sure you bring your umbrella or something.
I think it it becomes a point where if they're not on the emergency contact, or they're not, not listed as as someone that needs to deal with the student, they get turned away. You know, and yes, they're gonna have to show their ID, then the ID's gonna have to be checked against the information in the, in the student information system, to make sure that they're an okay person.
And that's, that's fine, if they're, if they're doing that, and not necessarily, you know, what I'm thinking is somebody's. See somebody come to the front door, they're buzzing in, and they go, oh, okay, just do like that, and then they don't check. To make sure, because everybody's human and we all make mistakes, and somebody's gonna be busy doing something. And they're just gonna buzz that person in, just like that.
Well, that's why the, that person, that additional person comes in hand, because that person's gonna be specifically for for that position.
That's only at the high school.
Oh, and that person is to to do security.
Gonna increase workload in every step.
Yeah.
Now that I will tell you, I'm a hundred percent for it, just have somebody else roaming around the school.
Yeah, yeah. So if grandma comes and she's not, or he's not on the list. He just needs to stay outside till little Joey goes out to meet him, right, or Joey can't even go out to meet him until. And we don't send kids out to meet parents, you gotta come in and get them, because you know how many times the sixteen year old has an eighteen year old waiting in the front room. Never.
I'm 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 gonna have to, I'm gonna have to put you on the spot there, no. Uh, yeah, my daughter broke that, not two, three weeks ago. I came up, she said, bring me something, I drove right up to the school, to the high school, pulled in the little horseshoe area right there. And before I was, because we have Life three sixty on our phone, she knew I was coming. Runs right out there, and I'm like.
And I have an extra supervision device.
Yeah.
And I I'm I'm all for it.
It's a closed but open campus.
I'm I'm all for that.
I've seen a lot of those vestibules in schools that are one campus, you know, once, one building and three, four stories tall. I'm actually been checking into a lot of those. Problem with that with ours is we put. I don't know how much funding we have available, if we put that vestibule. Like right now, when you're making it comfortable for people to come into the front, when they want to drop that lunch by to Tommy or whatever it is. They're gonna go straight to the back.
To the back.
And. We're gonna have to have some kind of funding to secure that back part, yeah, I mean, because that's, that's where the high school mainly, that's right where they're gonna go. It's like when they don't like, with the hassle of picking up kids up front, they go right to the back by the fieldhouse, and all those portals are outside the fence.
Yeah.
But isn't, there's, uh, I don't want to say this, but. If they're coming to. Pick up the, or hand off the lunches or whatever, that's a little different than trying to get in the building, right?
But but it's not different, because as soon as you have a kid, open the door.
Yeah.
You've now unsecured your, protocols and procedures are just as important as the physical.
Yes.
Of this, and and if people are unwilling to follow the procedures and and that will include the parents and the adults that come to visit that building. The building's not gonna be as secure as what we want. And that, and that becomes that. Oh, somebody drops the books off or the lunches off and aren't on the list, they really can't drop off anything. That's what you're saying.
Because there, you you know, to be honest with you, if if I'm a, if I'm a secretary and someone's like, I need to drop off books and you're not on the list. I might, you know, if it looks like you really have books, I might step outside, you've got the books for me, send them your way, and I'll take care of it. Right, I I mean, there's gotta be some common sense built into this.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
But but there also has to be like, no, we're not allowing you in the building, you are not on that, you're not on that list, we're gonna.
But, but there also has to be like, no, we're not allowing you in the building. You are not on that, you're not on that list. We're gonna follow protocols. You gonna leave them? Leave them on the ground. I'll come and get them.
A box or something.
You mind just leaving it and I'll be right out to pick it up?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, my, my point is we're gonna have to add more security on the back part of the high school. There's this.
You know, even just so people can't track that.
This, this is the high school campus. And we have as many classrooms outside of the main building, because we have inside. And so that really, and kids are coming and going all over, so.
The real solution to the high school is new construction. Um, what could we do short term to mitigate?
And new construction is actually gonna take care of that problem, because it would have made the office right up front and you. You see everything they have.
Yeah, so I think that's still gotta be. You sent us that, when I asked you a few weeks ago, that's what I wanted to look at, because I knew that there was a proposal. In that last time.
The office becomes way up here. And then this all becomes secured in this section. So secured entry here and secured entry here. And then this gets. I don't remember the exact design over there, but. People aren't here and people aren't driving through here anymore.
Those are the solutions we have to drive toward, but we need, but, but finding mitigations that can add, you know, significant value now.
So if we go with the blue now. And, but we can't go for a levy until next year, is that correct? Yeah. So, and then. That would help out for the high school and fix the high school problems if a levy is. A bond, excuse me, yeah, excuse me, yeah, bond. I got levy on my mind, cause that's what we're getting ready to run. So I got levy on my mind, so that's, yes. So when, if a bond is passed, then. Then we can make those other adjustments that we wanted to a couple of years ago.
So again, it's not like the high school would get nothing in this, cause they would still have a secured entry. And then security, but I, I don't see how we can.
Could we still put a fence around the back of the, uh, as a temporary fix for the back of the high school? Uh, across.
It'd be, it'd be.
Substantial?
Four to six hundred feet of fence, probably.
So there's a couple of different things. One, these portables, when kids go to these portables, they're entering through the store here. To figure out some way to, we would need to enclose this. And then across here someplace, but there's parking back here that we access. So that becomes.
Who parks back there predominantly?
Yeah.
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 But without. During the day.
Right.
Staff during the day and then in. People who come for the fields.
Practice.
And, and spectators who come to.
For the games.
Yes, spend more time behind the school and in front of it, really.
Yeah.
Go back there for. But that would also allow us to potentially secure the back, so there's no parking in the back except for staff and then everybody's gotta park in front and walk through the stadium. To go back to the ball, the other ball fields.
Yeah.
Which would alleviate any, um, you know, fire violations consistently happening in sports. Good luck getting, good luck, good luck getting an ambulance back there.
Yeah. Yeah, cause we, we have to be able to get back there for the football games and stuff, park through there.
Base, baseball fast pitch, it's almost.
They're gonna have to light up the front of the school that dropped the kids up there when they come back in the middle of the night.
Originally, that's.
But that's why we all.
Even when parked in the front, they just walk through the stadium out to the, and then people over time have just gotten used to, oh, just park them back, oh, just park them back. And.
Yeah.
The, you know, to fence that off and just make it so you can't go back there.
But really, uh, mo- most of the drop offs after events is back there. But you got kids walking up. All the way around to get to their cars at night. You know, whatever, something's gonna have to change.
It will have to change.
Yeah.
In order to increase security.
Yeah.
So that, that's the current state.
But we need to vote on whether we wanna pursue.
Yes, if we, if we want to pursue a full on vestibule, then. It's gonna take eight to nine months from when we say go, so. And we would need to get going as absolutely soon as possible. With either of those options, really. I mean, the, the other benefit I see to doing the single entry option. Would be that it can happen a lot faster.
You're ready, by fall?
By the end of fall.
Okay, okay.
I mean, it's part, it's parts, whether or not the.
Yeah.
You know, if we're early enough, uh, with the system we have, that they're not sold out of these buzzer systems already, that, that's really becomes a.
Yeah.
Supporting.
Okay, so I'm gonna throw a curb wall at you. What about this building?
We didn't not factor that into the cost.
Or that needs to be looked at too, just for entry, I, I think.
Yes, okay.
For anyway, cause you have both that front door, how often do you work here at night? Now granted that doors might be locked.
Yeah, it is locked.
Okay. So, um, and I don't think that would be a big deal. You. Put key entry on the front door?
Yeah, we have cards there already.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, with cameras, you know, so that whoever. Can monitor, cause you don't always keep somebody at that desk, right? Yeah, so. You put a camera there, you put a camera at the back door where the fence for the old jail used to be.
Yeah, there's a camera there.
The camera there too, but who watches the camera though?
There's three people watching the front door and back door camera at all times.
At all times?
Yeah.
So I still.
We're not one of, like, I'm not one of them when I'm working.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But if you're by yourself, then you need to have that access so you can pop that up on your camera. So to look at this building, this building needs to be looked at. Also, as, you know, for. Cameras and buzzing in it. I'm good with that. I'm good with the front one, but I'd like to see some. Uh, considerations for the high school over there around the back. Makes it painful on people. Hey.
Do we know another, I'd be willing to put a motion on table right now and say, let's go with the, all the schools of front entry. Extra staff. High school. The key cards on all of them where we need them. Fencing that we can afford that, I mean, I, I still know. If we say that and give it allowance, up to a certain amount, to work out the details within.
And you're gonna meet together again in two weeks.
Okay.
I think that's when.
Enough time.
Do that. You would just say, I want you guys to work between now and then to bring us some, some numbers. For whatever one of these options.
Yeah, I, I, I'm with you, Thomas. I, I'm not. I think we're all probably there, right? We don't mind spending a million dollars if we did.
It's gonna give us something.
Whenever we get the maximum out of that amount.
Yeah.
And then if the federal money comes in, we could pay ourselves back or add to or whatever, but.
Be careful about federal money, pay, paying back might be.
Yeah, that's.
We will have more to do.
Yeah.
But what can we do now that's gonna make a difference?
Yeah.
Um, to make the, you know, the difference I think we wanna make, it's gonna take a bond, so new construction, but what can we do now?
I'm afraid if we just, we put it all in the vestibules, there's so much else out there that we're vulnerable at, I'd rather take care of all the vulnerability.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, because I mean, the vestibules, you said eight to nine months, by that time, we're already looking into next year. We could be possibly running the bond. And then just do for the high school.
The biggest one, we need to secure the back.
Yeah.
So let's see if we can craft, craft your motion. So, wanna see where we're at. I guess not a motion, we're, we're just asking.
I don't need this.
Give us directions. If your direction is, give us some, go find us solid pricing on fencing and the rest of, we want the whole package of a front entry. Single front entry.
Yeah.
With fencing and key cards on the back entries. Bring us, bring us something for two weeks from now.
And include the district office.
Yeah, yeah, which is, I think is hard also, sort of.
Yeah, we'll have to figure out how that works.
The high school in the back is gonna have to have some kind of a call. A call button, whether you give, you know, physical foods, the code, so that. Five o'clock in the morning, by fifteen. You're not gonna have somebody in front of the office to see.
We'll have to have a security pad. There's no one that'll buzz them in at five o'clock when.
Right.
I opened the gates first at X-Go a couple of times this year.
Yeah, I mean, even over our building over here, it's got a keypad on it and the people that deliver water and stuff, they just got the number and they just, they come right in. So, and it's always during the day and, cause we're never.
Yeah.
There are a lot of procedural things that have to be followed through, because the, the amount of deliveries that occur at the, at the high school, it, it's. Way more than what people think.
Yeah.
We have game nights and stuff too. I mean, not just football game nights, but like the primary school carnival night, you know?
Right. And, and I, and I can tell you to be, you know, many systems you can set up, but nothing stays the same time. Right. So there, you know, they'll schedule shift, oh, we're on a special scheduled day because. So, you know, timing to have doors automatically unlocked when you get the pad, it just doesn't work. Because you're gonna, I mean, I'm gonna be sitting there, someone in their office unlock, 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 I mean. To, to allow certain things to work and it'd be, it, it starts to be a little bit of a. Over. As someone who sets up time, she's trying to set the plan spec systems for batting cages and let me tell you the hours that she, you know, spends on just getting batting cages. Key, key guard access.
By fifteen minutes and you have to. But you don't want the old one to go to spec, cause maybe that's act ready release and then, but you also, you know, it takes a long time to get. They're, they're not quite that intricate, you know, like it would be. You know, we take a lot of man hours to get all of our schools and all of our doors and all of our locations and maybe even a specialist, like. It would take, and then don't change it, cause you're gonna have to hire them all over again to rechange if they change their time.
So it's gonna be one kind of security from seven to three, there's gonna be a different kind of security from three to six thirty at night when the sports. Yeah, I'm just picking the numbers, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
In this mix of things. Would it be helpful, necessary, whatever? If we had a security person, say for three months or six months, just to do this? Just to do all the planning and implementation and organization.
The different, it's a different type of person.
Yeah, it's different than the guy walking around. No, no, I think the ones kind of monitoring, but the other is more of a planner.
Yeah.
Administrator type to.
It would be nice to have a person like that. I'm not sure who that would be. But I can check her, when the contractor that we use, I think would still be an interest for us to use again for. Expanding the project and we were able to get a lot of programming services from. When they, so it's possible we might be able to contract through that vendor sometime on the program. And that's just possible.
Are you talking about programming or planning?
Planning, like somebody who was in the central office or saying their job for six months or three months or whatever. Was to set up security systems and protocols and procedures for the district. And take that burden off everybody doing it part time. And I mean, everybody has to be engaged, cause you gotta own it, cause you have to be able to operate it, right? But someone just to do that.
Need some checking to see those, those type of people around. Are you aware of?
No, no, just pretending that there are security planners and the security.
Well, I'm also, I wonder if.
Yeah.
Um, whether they, you know, do a general contract, you know, for resources to, to school.
Really, you're looking for a consultant.
Yeah, right, right, sure. I mean, that'll be a means to be forever. A gig for six months or something, yeah.
ETSD now has a, um, safety center. Which is a person or two, but that's who I will call and say, do you know of anybody that does this type of work?
Yeah, to me, it's like some retired person that this is their thing and then now they do this consulting and help plan for. Campuses.
So we wanna look at fencing the high school.
And a bunch of others.
Okay. And you don't think we need a, a person to walk around at the middle school?
Not, that would not be a recommendation I'd have current. We might change our mind. High school's definitely priority over the.
Yeah, well, I'm in addition to, if we, you know.
I think we need to have some more discussion about that, about whether that would be well utilized. That the kids at the middle school during the school day are much more. Locked down, for lack of a better term. And, you know, they go into the hallway with a pass and.
Other than when they're out running around the school.
Yeah. But I don't know if a security person would.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah, and they, they have supervisors when they're out there doing that, but they're, uh, it's much more contained. Or they're, it easier to monitor their whereabouts than it is on the high school site.
Wow, I'm not gonna disagree with you there.
Not going to the cars and all that kinda stuff. All right, so I think I have what I need to do next steps. So two weeks, we'll chat again.
Thank you. Okay, and our next item, uh, new superintendent. Uh, so Jennifer's with us virtually tonight. We have a few items about, we have the most important is the oath of office. Kim will administer, and then we have some resolutions that, uh, we need to go through to approve. Given to Jennifer the authority to sign approved documents.
Hold on, you're big, there we go.
There she is.
You're welcome.
Right, do we? Wanna start with the oath of office?
I think we should do that and. All right, Jennifer, are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, do you have a copy in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Oh, perfect, that way you don't have to, I, I can rattle off a sentence or two and you don't have to commit it to memory.
Sounds good.
All right, so, um, Jennifer Bethman, um, would you please repeat after me? I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will.
I do hereby solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of, Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution, Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the superintendent of Rochester School District number four oh one.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of superintendent of Rochester School District number four oh one.
Thurston County. Gray's Harbor and Lewis Counties.
Thurston, Gray's Harbor and Lewis County, Lewis Counties.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, and so our board members official will sign, um, this evening and then we'll have, we'll take your signature. The next time you're in the office.
Yes.
Regul, we're gonna go through, there's just something we need to sign.
I'm sorry, you can leave them.
So we'll start with, uh, resolution point two oh five authorization. Actually, we need signature. I will move to approve resolution twenty two oh five. Right here, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Thomas. All in favor, say aye. All right, twenty two oh five passes. Resolution point two oh six, authorization of warrant signature. While I move, so do your second.
Second.
Michael, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed. Twenty two oh six is passed. Resolution point two oh seven, authorization to invest funds. Move to approve point two oh seven.
So move.
Second, I'll say, I'll say, I'll second, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, point two oh seven passes. Uh, resolution point two oh eight, designation of district agent. Thank you, Wana, a second. All seconds. Uh, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, point two eight is passed. Resolution point two oh nine designating designation of auditing officers. I'll move to approve point two oh nine.
Second.
Uh, seconds, all in favor, say aye. Opposed. Right, and resolution point two ten authorization of student release acceptance.
So move.
Thank you, Michael. All seconds.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, resolutions are passed and I have packets and duplicate that will pass around at the end just to get a rate signed.
Been a while, packet to move around.
Jennifer, welcome.
Thank you. I look forward to working with everybody, getting to know the community and making a fabulous educational system for our kids.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Uh, item A, student academic eligibility is. Update to WIA academic eligibility guidelines for twenty two, twenty three school year. I think Kevin, you're gonna on the. In there.
Hi, I'm good evening, everybody. I'm, you know, I I was just thinking, I'm so glad I'm attending. Tonight to to be a part of those security discussions. So, you know, you just can't help live today and and not have that run through your head. Um, so I'm glad I'm here. Um, I wanted to approach the school board and ask. For reasonable consideration to to adopt the the academic suspension amendment. Um, by WIAA, uh, which essentially changes the suspension and this is for fall only. It changes the suspension to a probation. It would change it to a four week probation. Um, and you know, some of the conversations I've been involved with and I even, uh, you know, know at the state level. Was wondering, there were some wonderings about, you know, the five week suspension for grades that occurred. Um, at the end of the previous trimester semester, um, and just the timing of that. And the whole spirit of of the amendment is to increase opportunity uh for engagement. Um, you know, you, some of those kids who who. You know, they start a new year, they're on the fence, whether they want to come out for an activity. Um, but they know that they fell down a little bit in the in the spring. Um, that they're gonna be staring at a five week suspension, which can be defeating and I think, uh. I think, I think we lose some kids, you know, this concept of, you know, starting with a clean slate and. I know that in in some of my noticings and observations is that so often, you know, that sophomore. Doesn't behave like that person did as a freshman. And I think some of the more significant pieces of maturity I see is especially during that sophomore junior year. Um, you know, and it can be incredible in in my mind in what I've experienced. Um, so, you know, it's a, it's a four week probation, the the thing that we under need to understand is just for fall. And then through the course of the rest of the year, there is a five week suspension for not making the academic progress. Let's see, at the end of the four weeks. Last, oh, I got a note here I was gonna mention. I lost my train of thought. I apologize.
Sure.
But so, so what, so what I'll add to it is that I'm at the middle school, they're 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 shorter seasons. So at the middle school, the probation would be. Um, a three week probation. Um, and of course, kids that that fall down in the spring, um, they're gonna be encouraged to. Uh, to take summer school and some of those individuals are going to sweep up uh failing grades in that process. And and again, th- there was just this discussion a little bit about 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 fairness. You know, you got kids that wanna that wanna start new, but there's. They're staring at a penalty uh to start a year off fresh. Um, so those are the considerations involved with with the amendment. And I was hoping the board would give reasonable consideration to adopt it for the next year.
Thank you, Kevin. The question about the probation, um. Does it, you know, some of the other eligibility depends on the number of classes. If you're failing one class. It's so many weeks you're failing two classes. So the probation from spring quarter to fall, it's it's a clean slate, no matter what.
This, the, it's, it's it's an opportunity. Um, from from not doing well in the last, I hope I'm answering your question, the last trimester. And semester to show and demonstrate that, um, you know, you want to start fresh and you and you and you want to. Uh, you want to be involved and you're, you want to buckle down and have opportunities and, um. You know, I think instead of talking, you know, might talk some kids out of it with a five week suspension, but you know, these kids, these kids need to be engaged in. And um, and be with their coaches and and from my desk. Um, I will create tasks through Skyward, starting with. Um, starting with the first Monday after we start school. Um, to where head coaches are gonna receive weekly grade reports and. Um, with those grade reports that I'll be viewing as well, you know, we're gonna connect kids. We're gonna, we're gonna have talks with coaches about. Release time for kids to go and get extra help after school, uh, the first half hour, you know, whatever kind of tutoring is going on. Um, but again, the spirit of it is 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 to increase opportunity engagement for those kids that would. But that otherwise maybe talk themselves out of participating in an activity.
So what happens that is different for a student that is on probation versus a student that is not on probation in terms of an athlete? And great checks.
Well, the way our language reads right now, um, grade checks are happening. Um, the first after the, it's somewhere in the third week, um, of the start of the semester. Okay, so even with the four week probation and so they they give, they give you a window about grade checks and it's like a from three to six. And I want to say our language, the district chose to to have it happen every three weeks.
And so grade checks are every three weeks for every kid or just those students who are on probation?
Um, they would be for every kid. I'm looking at them every every week, just because we wanna, we wanna make sure that if somebody's someone.
Yeah. So is there, is there anything that additional that happens for a student who's on probation versus student who is just has a regular grade check?
No, we would, you know, we would, we would apply the very same thing. I think what it takes away is is that kid coming in, uh, you know. Why do I want to go out and and work hard for a team and and I'm not, I'm not even gonna see the first three contests? So it gives them a chance. It gives them a chance and and we can bolster that, you know, with the right support and making the the right connections.
Kevin, I. I like that you're bringing this forward because I think we do want youngsters staying engaged and, um. See that there's hope and all that type of thing and we know the value of being on the teams and such. We have been pretty strong about academics first and wanting to make sure that. You know, that they take that part of it seriously. I'm just wondering if there's something. If there is a path forward that may be diff, there may be something more here. So I'm not sure we're that far off. If they tanked at the end of the school year, they didn't get the grades, so they're coming in the next year, next fall. You're suggesting letting, you know, having them play with weekly grade checks, but is there more that they could do too? Like. Do they have to write up something about a commitment to explain, you know, what the, how how this fall is gonna be different than the spring was?
You mean like an, like an academic plan?
Yeah, and and do they check in with you as the athletic director or a coach or a counselor, somebody? Within that probationary time, so it's more than just grade checking that there's actually some.
Well, you know, there's.
Mentoring or something happened during that phase. I I. I wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Oh, that's okay. I was looking for a little bit more.
Yeah, well, you know, that certainly, that certainly can be a component. I assure you that, uh, you know, there are a number of set of eyes. On uh, on students and their grades from the counselors, those who are in athletics. Um, I see to it that they have a visible academic report, um, on a weekly basis and. And, um, you know, if a, if a student's doing well and the students keep, you know, keeping their nose clean and. And they're staying academically fit, um. At this time, there is no, no in intervention, if you will. Um, and it seems as though you may be talking about an academic plan uh per student. That would be on probation. Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, some, it's something more than just somebody's checking their grades. Like, is there somebody taking that youngster under the wing for that? First few weeks and sort of counseling him through, not the formal counseling, but I don't know. It's like more, more of a higher touch than just.
Right, and and I think, I think, um, uh, you know, a great strategy with that, um. Um, is is through their coach too, who's gonna be be aware of their grades and you know, the. The academic accountability, it it doesn't go away, um, because at the end of that four weeks, if a student is still. Um, not demonstrating the academic progress, they are placed on a three week suspension and that suspension. Is kind of a, you know. You know, do not pass go. It's a, it's not a, it's not a, okay, on the Monday after week four, um, my grades are all now passing. Um, that's not the case. You are placed on three week suspension, um. Uh, you know, for those, for those three weeks. And so the importance is, um, is the things that we can do in those four weeks. And get kids started off on a positive foot, um, and and then feed that and feed that. So. Um, I I'm, I hope I'm answering your question. Um, I'm gonna be watching, you know, I mingle with kids in the hallway all the time. They will, I will have had communications as well, coaches will, with students who are identified as being part of that probation. Um, and again, these are, these are students, um, who. Have, who've, who, who failed to uh pass two or more classes in the previous trimester. Um, or semester. So, um, and there's not handfuls and handfuls of those probably.
So I, I, I think maybe you're doing what we're asking, which is, which I, what I think I'm hearing people say is more than it, this just isn't a. Uh, activity of checking a grade book. It's really is having communication during those four weeks with the coach and with the. These players to make sure that they're on track. So that we don't just wait for four weeks for them to have had problems without kind of checking with them along the way.
Yeah, absolutely. And like, like I mentioned earlier, it's, you know, it's about, it's about identifying, uh, that student. And and saying, okay, well, you know, what's going on here? This could be a little bit stronger. What do we need to do? What resources are you accessing? Um, are we in need of, um, connecting with your teacher and setting some time up after school, have coach release you for. For a half hour, forty five minutes, let's get this turned around. So we're not in danger because after that four weeks, if we're still in this spot. Um, you're, you're gonna be, uh, you're gonna be suspended from athletics.
So Kevin, I think that that is what I was asking and if that person, I think we should have that person identified. I think it. You sound like somebody's committed to doing this. I just don't know if you could do it all yourself. So is it the coach? Is it you as the athletic director? Is it an assistant coach? Who is gonna be, who's gonna be identified for each of those kids so that they have a touch point? Like, that's all I'm asking for.
Well, no, I, no, I try to be that guy. I truly do. Um, and I, and I do lean on coaches too, who want to be a part of this, mind you. Um, you know, they want kids to come out and they 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 want them to be engaged and, um, you know, teachers do as well. And so sometimes from my desk, it's getting those right people talking about the same thing.
Thanks, Kevin. Other questions? All right, uh. I would like to move to that we approve the academic eligibility proposal as proposed. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
On second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any post?
No, I I'm just thinking about whether we should pile it for a year, see if it works, but I'll, I'll go with it.
It is for the year. It is for just this next year.
But we just do this for one year. Okay, yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Kevin.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item, interschool activities. Uh, prove the activities offered by Rochester Middle School, Rochester High School. Kevin, you gonna walk us through this as well?
That was on his list. This is, it's just an annual event, um, activity that. The board each year is asked to approve the list of interschool activities. This is how you would know if we were adding something new. So.
Okay, I I do have a question in reference to this. So. Is. Shooting. A class in Central. There's a club here. Because the the gun club is down there next to Thorbacks and that that area down there, it says up on their, on their board. That, you know, youth shooting for, I thought there was a shooting team.
Yeah.
We still have.
Districts, districts can have them. We don't currently have a competitive team.
Okay.
We have a club that's associated with one of our, um, CTE programs.
Okay.
So it's not listed.
Yes, that's why I was asking. I was like, because I want to know, well, if we have them, why don't we have one? Is there not an interest in that? Or is there some other issue? Why can't we, why can't we have?
That will come up on a future agenda.
Something like that. Would it, would that be something like swimming where we end up doing a cooperative?
Equestrian, things kind of like that, right? And we have a equestrian team.
Equestrian is.
Affiliation.
An affiliation, yeah.
It's not even a formal club thing. Okay.
Horse people are dead.
Yes.
Our teams are different. Any other questions or discussion?
Did we add anything? I guess it's a question.
But I have, uh, here a motion to approve the interschool activities for twenty two, twenty three.
Almost.
Thank you, Wana, for your second.
I'll say again.
Thanks, Thomas. All in favor, say aye. You posed. Approved. All right, next is ASB ticket prices for Rochester High School.
None. Okay, thank you.
So, okay, yes, the 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 cost prices there are the same as they were this year and.
A week, you know, agree so that everybody pays the same amount.
It's cool, yeah.
I feel like Neil suggested that we give a break to first responders or something. Does that, I make that up? Was there something left?
And we, it's, we is there, we have, uh, it's six. Yep, that's your first responders.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, any other questions? That one? If not, can I get a motion to approve the ASB ticket prices for twenty two, twenty three?
I'll move.
Move in a second.
I'll second.
One second, all in favor, say aye. Imposed. Approved. All right, next is student fees for twenty two, twenty three. Uh, and I think this is, uh, to continue, um. To remove the pay to play fees for another year. If we've had the last, that was last year, maybe last two years now.
Two years. So what you'll see is, look at the far right column that would show any increases and decreases. And so the only, um, areas that have any text in that column are pay to play. With the request to to continue the wave, waiving those fees. All the other fees remain the same. Oh, that's right. I just don't, I ap- I apologize showing this over here reminding me that all fees were waived in this last year, not just pay to play. So this would be only waving.
Please this year.
Reinstiting the other fees.
Thank you. They waived for two years or just last.
Would have been just twenty twenty one.
That we waived them all.
Yeah.
Where does this money go when you do collect it?
And it goes back into the that program area.
Okay.
So some of these go into ASB. And some of these like honor society would go to the honor society and a portion of that is paid to the national bill to be in.
A member of that, yeah, okay.
So it it really depends from category, either one is a bit different.
But it's pay to play go into that.
Athletics. Did art club goes to buy more clay. Arts play.
Did the waiving of the fees increase substantially our participation in the clubs and the activity? You're saying no, you all saying no?
I don't know.
Okay.
It was hard to tell last year, last year was, I mean, twenty twenty one.
Yeah.
The sports fees were short.
Yeah.
Um and then some of the others, the clubs probably, you know, did be zoom.
Mostly these clubs last year.
So although we waived a lot of things, we might not have collected very much either.
I mean, the year that we're in right now, right, the one we're ending right now, that's what we're talking about, right?
Obviously, my last. Yeah, this year we did have had regular.
Not now.
So we didn't charge for this year?
Right.
I do not know if it how it impacted.
My recommendation would be that, can we check on that and vote on this in two weeks, or do we have to have it done tonight?
That problem will be problem, I think, I'll I'll be honest, I think the challenge that we could face is that we're at the very end of the school year, so. I'll do my very best to reach out to every person that I can to get a response to the most, like how how much did it fluctuate?
I can, I can tell you with the CTE student clubs, it did not increase their membership. Okay. Now, do I think the CTE advisors? Did a good job saying you can join this year for free? Probably not so much.
Yeah.
So do we need to do a better job with with our advisors that are in charge of in those clubs? To to make sure that they're advertising that with.
Yeah.
With with students, yes.
The reason I ask is that we spent a lot of time on these fees, right, how many hours we spent on these fees over the years, right? And so now we're at a point where we've taken them away. And so if we could take a little bit more time just to see whether that made a difference or not, if it didn't make a difference, then okay. But if it all sudden, uh we got a lot more whatever special band kids or or club kid.
But I also think we were also at the beginning of the year in a still in a fun place.
Yeah.
Where there there were plenty of parents that were like, yeah, that'd be great if you could participate in that, but we're, you know, that event got canceled, that event got canceled.
Yeah.
And so we kind of put a damper, so I'd almost, I'd almost say. You might be better off letting it go another year and collect that at the end of next year, when hopefully things will be. Maybe nine months of normal.
Yeah.
Uh of participation, and that would get you better data than what you're gonna get from this year.
If we get a board, you know, I'd lean that way, but I, there's other board, you know.
I I don't think there's a, there's a thing around a forty and. Necessarily, so.
But we are proposed, this proposal would reinstate. Fees for most of the clubs, it's really just. It's just a pay to play. That's.
And there's no, yeah, and then there's no increase on the other. Prior years from prior years, yeah, for prior years. That's different, Michael, too, because it's sixteen, sixteen, I think, was the bill. The ones with the asterisk next to it on there, which are all clubs and those type of ASV things. A family, a low income family can ask to be waived and they wouldn't have to pay regardless of the fee being.
Yeah, yeah, I think we've, I think, and we've always been good about that, it's just whether or not people feel. Comfortable someone asking and thing.
Um one, and it's a pretty confidential process, they can't just ask of anyone and it's kind of done.
Okay.
A very secure confidential way, and it's just kind of more information looking at.
Okay.
These pre-COVID versus.
Yeah.
Now. But we can definitely put it back.
And I'm one voice, you guys can vote it, I mean, we could vote tonight and we split on a little bit, I don't know, but I'd rather.
I don't think it hurts to wait, I I'm I'm I guess I'm skeptical about how much we'll learn in two weeks, but. But we can, we'll learn something.
Not gonna hurt it.
Yeah, not gonna hurt, yeah. Yeah.
John, I do what you can, I mean, don't, no, don't really joke.
It's all your fault.
These people down on their last.
No worries, we'll do our best.
Why is that you worried about those little bit of money?
Right.
Alright, so student fees, we move to uh next meeting and Michael owes Sean a coffee card or something.
And now that's reported.
All in favor? Alright, uh contracts, uh contract Washington State's healthcare authority through June twenty five, I think this is a renewal.
It is, and there is a change, and I did get some information after we spoke and. And Jill's quick version is the healthcare authority has changed the processing. Of this agreement. Um that when money is collected through the Medicaid system. And the per the. The organization that administers all the paperwork and. Does all of that and the the process by which they get paid is being changed. And it will make it way easier for us as a school district, and it will cost us. So our recommendation is that you approve the revised agreement.
Yeah, this takes us through June of twenty twenty five.
Yes.
I've been looking that we approved the healthcare authorities. Contract update through June twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
Like Tom, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I didn't ask for discussion, sorry, Michael.
No, I I think I just. I better abstain. Because I work there.
Yes. Thank you for making it easier. Alright, most passes. And next is the Patty Webber ASL interpreter contract twenty two, twenty three.
And I spoke about the last one, sorry, I forget you were. What do you want to tell us about Heidi? We have an ASL interpreter that is very, um she comes from a long experience and she will be. Taking the place of her who's been at Grand Mount for the last few years and we're very excited.
Hey, hey, Shadis, the rate from.
The previous person was an employee.
Okay.
So and and so, yes, there's an increase in rate.
So ASL, if it's if an ASL teacher is not. At school that day for for whatever reason. Do we have a substitute? That has that ability, or are they just?
So I'm I'm gonna split hairs a little bit on this, because we have ASL teachers, but these are ASL interpreters. So.
Okay.
It's it's two different things, um but we we sometimes can shuffle because we have. Um five in the district, five ASL interpreters, so sometimes we can move around. And we have a couple of people that can subs from time to time, but it is really difficult to get subs. So there are, there are times where we don't have someone, but we try really hard to get people into the most. Needed places if we're missing interpreter.
Oh, huh.
Yeah.
We have some students are much more dependent on that interpreter. And then than others.
Yeah.
And so those ones who are in desperate need.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we can sometimes share.
Yeah.
Interpreter for a day, but it's tricky to to find people with those skills.
Oh, yeah, sure. This time, my daughter was in a class, the teacher wasn't there, trying to learn that. You get a substitute, she's not learning for days. So just brought that to me, I didn't know. Just asking a question, that's it, we don't need to go search for any other answers now. I'm not Michael, we're not gonna go search for any other answer. The answer that I was looking for, that's good enough.
Alright, right here, a motion to approve the ASL contracts.
I'll take it.
Next, Thomas.
I'll second.
On seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Alright, next expenditures. We have a few. Uh first, uh. Good expenditure, eighteen thousand five hundred eighty three dollars sixty one cents to purchase K through five math pilot materials for the twenty two, twenty three school year.
Yep, so uh the. The K five math penny came to the decision that we need to pilot. Again, with the same materials. Uh and one of the major reasons for this is students coming into the uh in into the year. Um where where they were with some uh learning. Um deficits in 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 math and whatnot, we don't feel that the materials. Uh where it was able to show us whether or not they're good, bad, or indifferent because of. Kids were starting so much slower than what they should have been, so uh what what we're hoping to do is to. Um pilot the same materials year, uh again this year, that the cost is no different than if we were gonna go out and buy the materials that we. That we currently have, um you know, that we've used previously, so it's it's a wash in cost. Um teachers do feel like now that they've been through and use the materials for a year, they're gonna get a much better feeling. These are gonna be the materials that we should really should move forward and adopt. Or versus, no, we wanna go out and look for something totally different. Um so they're feeling pretty good, and that and that came from surveying. Um you know, we have a great level representative from from each each grade K through five, also our instructional coaches and administrator on there. Um we got feedback uh from uh forty five of the fifty seven teachers on 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 survey. Whatnot, um the the reps went out and talked to their individual teams, individual team said. Uh no, at this point, let's move forward with trying to pilot one more year and and so. Uh we would like to do that and I'll we'll bolster with some some additional training. Um with for teachers in uh June and August. Um to to help them out and ma- make sure that we're understanding as we move forward, so that's why they would like to move at this point, and since. These materials are not uh been previously adopted by by the board. Um then that's why I have to come ask for uh permission to to purchase these, I like adopted materials that. Have gone through a full adoption.
Mm-hmm.
Those are things that we just, if we need replacements or whatnot, we just go out and purchase, but in this case pilots, I have to come, come to you guys and ask you if it's okay.
You you is, are teachers having difficulties administering this? Is that what you were, I heard you say something about training for teachers or something?
So any, I think any anytime you have a new set of correct materials, there is a learning curve.
Yes.
So um so there is, there is a, there is a learning curve here.
Okay.
And so um based upon feedback, there's there um a majority of our teachers asked if they could have a little more training in a couple of different areas. And so um I I think in in order to make sure that our students are 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 getting. The best that they need, then it's worth providing that that extra training to teachers.
When would that happen?
So June fourteenth and August twenty third, June seventeenth, August twenty third, sorry.
And August twenty third, so the last day of school and then the first day of school.
Yeah, in the generally, it's. Yeah, so they get to choose.
Oh, okay.
Anybody, it'll be the same same training.
Oh, okay.
Who doesn't is unable to make those two trainings, we're gonna set up an after school training in September.
Okay.
To teach everybody else.
Okay.
So I we've, and and that was, that was the committee like, yes, if we do it this way, then we're gonna be, we're gonna be much better off.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So.
Any other questions on that? Alright, are you a motion to approve the K five math pilot materials?
Uh, go ahead.
Here a second?
I'll take it. I was trying to move to the next set of slides here.
I'll say, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any posts?
Grant, I can speak to the next one too, if you want, because.
Twenty two thousand six hundred ninety four dollars and two cents.
I know.
So uh you know, I I've 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 been here, I've been here quite a while, the uh current life sector that I was twenty years old, I was part of. The original purpose, the original trailer, it's a steel trailer. Actually fairly heavy and uh it it does have some some issues with it, the trailer that they're asking to purchase here. Uh is aluminum, so it's quite a bit lighter, um much easier uh to tow. Um it also has the um it has a divider gate in there and it actually quick, a a quick gate in the middle, which the current one does not have. So it's actually safer for loading animals and for students and teachers for for loading animals. Um the trailer is not always used just for uh for livestock, it's it's also used to take. Scrap metal off and get it recycled or go pick up scrap metal from Satina, so our so we're purchasing less metal and we're we're uh Satina donates metal to us. Um uh you know, I used to use the stock trailer when we take kids game on the campus trip, we throw all their stuff in the back and. You know, when you pull up to a state park with a stock trailer and a bus full of kids, they start questioning it. But um so the the stock trailer is used quite a bit for for these areas. Um and um Michael and has been looking all over, they they looked at about a about twelve hundred miles. Um for a structure, like it's hard to come by right now, and they actually found this one down in Woodland. Um so it's got us the locals, we're gonna get with the vendor, all our local local vendors are like, we're a year out. Oh man.
You have a picture of this thing?
Vendor's holding this one, actually, I can.
Something similar.
I can come up.
I'm just trying to put a picture with it here.
Uh you know, let me, let me, let me, let me work on finding anyone here.
Don't we talk about the next one while you look at that?
Sure.
Okay, so the next is, you'll notice there are three um purchase requests or expenditure requests from our CTE program. CTE has a certain amount of funding that they need to spend or else they are not gonna, they're gonna lose access to that funding. So that's why you see this end of the year requests of pretty significant. And the next is a vertical mill for the metal shop. And so this is a replacement of a of a very old um piece of equipment that's currently within our. Shop program. And it's a twenty up to twenty thousand dollars and there's, there were two pictures associated examples.
It's a bumper pole.
Which one, we're doing the bumper pole?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That way it can go behind the suburban or behind the the truck, so.
Okay.
Yep. So it's the same size as the current structure that they have, same length and everything. Um it's just gonna be a heck of a lot easier on the vehicles, because it's some other ones steel, it is heavy.
I'm interested.
And yeah, it's just about, it's just about done, it's it's twenty plus years old. So it's lived its life.
Do we, I don't know, I thought of this, but do we have car into these things, do they get parked somewhere, or they just stop and no?
They they.
It's a, no. No, okay.
So it's but it's parked out, and and actually, the the steel one's actually done really well for for as long as it's been, I mean, that's. That's actually pretty good for a for a stock trailer, they had that amount of time without it. Um you know, rusted out totally, the aluminum at the time, twenty years ago, was just not even close to being affordable. Um the aluminum now is about the same price as what the what the steel was then, so.
Because it's market, you probably surplus that old one, which paid for it new twenty years ago.
Probably pretty close to it, yeah, yeah.
It keeps up on the maintenance.
The the department keeps up on the maintenance on there.
Okay.
Right, so we would need a motion on that one and then separately for the vertical mill.
Okay, so we'll start with the livestock trailer, to motion to approve the purchase.
I'll do that.
Next, Thomas, I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any post? Approved. Alright, I'll make a motion for the up to twenty thousand dollars for the vertical mill, the metal shop. Do we have a second? Or either.
Where is that at, am I?
Yeah, I'm.
I'm not seeing.
The vertical mill.
It's up, it just, there's not an attachment, it's just, uh it's in the list.
Oh, it's in the, okay, okay, I'm I'm down here looking for something to.
Oh, there, oh, there are links there, yeah, to the jet mill, okay, sorry.
Oh, I I was looking for the the PDF.
Oh, yes, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
I do see the link, it's not under the main.
Because neither of those are, uh they're both up to use, they're not in exact.
Uh, okay, and the mill is old or torn out, we actually don't have a vertical?
No, the no, the vertical mill would be an additional skill uh that we're seeing is needed, so this is uh, this is a mill that can do three D. Um milling and it's it's definitely a skill that uh come coming out of the. Um advisory committee is something that's uh needed in our students that are that are advanced in in metal shop, that they have this ability. The other thing we see is that uh vertical milling is a is a huge need um up up and around. Um contractors that make things for point area, so we're looking at. You know, total urban area, um you know, those positions are starting out at fifty bucks an hour, keep them on a vertical mill, and they'll go on up to about seventy five dollars an hour. Um and you don't necessarily need um uh college deployment to go run a vertical mill, if you have a hack. If you understand how to run a vertical mill, they'll hire you to run the ver- a vertical mill and make, and you're basically making widgets for air airspace.
Okay.
Um and whatnot, so one of the big uh projects that would start of that would actually be. Um the the beginning project is they have to, they would have to uh cut out their own set of dice. Um and drill the numbers on them and everything with the mill, um so.
And the teacher who does this?
Michael Justky.
Does he need a additional training for this, since we don't have one?
Built built in. Company, company that uh both companies he's looking at purchasing from and it's gonna somewhat come down to who hasn't stocked. Um, as well. Both companies are willing to to train him up um on it. And then also there is, uh, he told me there's uh three or four other programs in the area. Uh, teachers that already know how to use it that he's gonna be partnering with to make sure that he um knows knows.
He doesn't have one in his house already?
He does not currently have in his house, but he, but we do have, you know, we we do have the uh. Um, the three D router and and whatnot, and they 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 all work fairly similar in nature. And so uh learning curve shouldn't be too bad.
So it'd be one or the other. Those are the two.
As far as, yeah.
The links in here. Yeah, the link.
Yeah.
There's two different.
Yeah, it would be one of the, if you weren't. He's still working with, you know, what vendor's gonna be able to get to him early enough. You know, so he can get things up and running and and in place for fall.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, I don't wanna put you on the spot. What's the difference between the two of them?
That I I Thomas, I can't tell you a lot there. So. Um, I I know both of them are um, are in high school shops in our in our area. And and so tho- those are really the two that he was, he was looking.
I mean, the the cheaper one looks like it's more.
Fancy.
Yeah, I mean, you're lucky you need more technology. The other one looks more like a.
Something from the sixties.
Yes.
An old lathe that's uh.
That's what I was thinking, a lathe, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and really, that's what it is. I mean, it's a three-dimensional lathe, but in a vertical sense rather than that horizontal. So that's really the.
So he's good with either one of these?
Yeah.
Um. Okay.
Yeah. Pretty interesting.
Okay, for the discussion on vertical mill? If not, can I get a motion to approve up to twenty thousand dollars for the vertical mill?
To move?
I'll second.
One second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Group. Okay, next approval is for an expenditure up to seventy thousand dollars to purchase a vehicle for the CTE uh program. Assuming this is a passenger van.
So um, you you will see down, there's this list. And their first choice is a ten-person Ford Transit passenger van or similar vehicle. So it gives an example of a Chevy Suburban or other SUV van holding eight passengers if ten passengers can't be found. So ten passenger vehicles are very much at a premium right now, very, very difficult to get your hands on. Um, so there are, that's why there is a variety of options. And the the reason they're seeking approval in general as opposed to specific is because if one becomes available, if you don't. If we're not ready to move on it right now, it's sold to somebody else by the time we get around to.
Can wait for wait for two weeks. And they're looking at used um, less than fifty thousand miles.
Do they currently have it? Sorry, transportation at the moment? Yes, they have a a couple of different vehicles. And I don't know, it's just replacing or adding to.
It's it's replacing the blue van that was purchased in two thousand two that was used at the time.
Oh, it's more than two.
More than twenty years on.
About twenty years.
I like my car.
Oh, but let me believe me, it was, it wa- it was like the Cadillac of vans when I drove it compared to what the Great White, what we had.
Well, you know, we can, we can clean it up a little bit and.
Yeah.
Put it on Craigslist, you might get something.
Yeah, yeah.
Surplus.
Definitely. It's resting through as well, see.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion around the CTE vehicle purchase? Not their motion to approve the purchase?
Okay, I'll do it.
Thank you, uh, all seconds, all in favor, say aye.
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 Purchase approved. All right, next is surplus.
We have CTE surplus and surplus from middle school and make us department and just.
Uh, before we jump into surplus, they, I mean, maybe this is on me, um, the fence and the shed for preschool and all that.
I don't think we received anything. Do you have any?
Well, between Amy and Laura and I, we've worked on and I I I think we probably all assumed somebody else put it wherever it was on the list and.
We can do in addition to the agenda if somebody gets that information.
Thank you, before and I, we have. Yeah, we have the, we have the numbers.
So we would need. In addition to the agenda.
As I say, this is, this is a grant that Laura and Amy worked on and it came in and it has, everything has to be done by the end of June. It's all grant money, it's none in here, but.
Okay, so if I make a, I'll make a motion that we add additional item to the agenda around fencing.
And a shed.
And a shed.
So you want me to give you a price on it before you move this?
I mean, motion that we're adding to the agenda, can I get a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, it's added to the agenda. We're gonna squeeze it in at uh. F A.
All right, now expenditures.
So are three. So the the amount of it is, and I look at the exact, I can pull up the exact number um, in a minute, but it's about twenty-one thousand dollars. And what we're doing is, well, what I'm doing, I'm doing nothing other than, you know, about it. Um, is we have a transitional kindergarten grant, um, which is for our TK programs. Um, and because of our TK programs, we have this year eighteen additional four-year-olds and next year eleven thirty-six additional four-year-olds. So um, so we have a preschool playground that was made for, you know, ten or fifteen students that we're now gonna have forty-five students out there needing recess. So um, it's it's expanding that preschool play area, um, the fence and putting a new shed for storage and that type of thing. And then we're also gonna add. Um, using grant money, we're gonna add some additional play, play fixtures out there for the students. Um, and so that that is what the um expenditure is for, and it does need to be spent and by the end of June.
You could be able, you have to receive the goods too.
You have to pay for it, have this, they don't have to be, I think that all the things will have to be connected, but they have to be on premises. So, yeah, so. Another shed is exactly like the one that's there. Yeah, it's the rough cost of the sixty-seven hundred dollars. I got an official quote. I I apologize. I think. Everybody's, I was probably me supposed to get this to Sean and with work with Amy, I've got it spread thin everywhere, but. And then the fencing cost is uh two hundred and twenty-seven feet. The one thing the fence is gonna do too is. The fence right now where the buses blow up is a four-foot fence. So that's all. Um, we're gonna go out another thirty feet and put a six-foot fence from the existing six-foot fence all the way down to the school. So the one thing with the security we're talking about, that adds that right there. It was just a six-foot fence, so nobody's, you know, reaching over a fence right there. And then there's a couple of four-foot dividers, because it'll make it so that when the fence starts to separate the. Player is for three-year-olds or four-year-olds or five-year-olds, they have that option.
Is this over by the grade school or the primary?
This is on the primary, but it's on the side of Grandma Delmon.
So like if you're standing and you're looking at the grandma playground and turn around and it's, it's right there.
It's a big grassery right in front of the buses, where the buses blow, we're gonna annex it at the playground.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they shed sixty-seven hundred dollars, the fencing is about a thousand six hundred change. Or two hundred and twenty-seven feet, like three days. And then the concrete work, I guess, next to a boss, we'll get somebody to come and do that for June, so we're gonna do it in-house. But that would be about fifteen hundred, fifty thousand dollars.
This is grant funding that needs to.
Yeah, this is, I mean, that will.
Thirty thousand dollars. Thirty thousand dollars to put a shed fencing concrete.
We got people that qualify to do C M A?
Yep.
Making sure.
Okay, uh, for item F A. I'll make a motion to approve up to thirty thousand dollars for fencing, shed, concrete. Did everything? I miss something?
Little toys.
There, your second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any post?
I appreciate your praise and the fact that we're saying you're going, did you?
You guys wanna talk about?
It's hard to put all this together. It's a short time, babe. It's really hard to make that happen.
Use the page two twenty-five. That's coming soon.
All right, uh, now it's surplus. So we have four surplus items. Groups.
Yeah, groups. And they can all be approved together. Yes, it's just one motion.
Awesome. Somebody will walk us through this, or is it? I've looked through it, it doesn't.
It says, yeah, there's nothing on.
A T E, R M S.
Punching backs. There's one item that is listed out separately above the attachments that didn't make its way onto the list. It's a. A Mojo three D printer from the woodshop classroom. So just know that that too is part of this surplus list. You can see there. Yeah, I was gonna say, you can see the paper towel dispenser since we went all like, the motion sensor, they're all going in there.
Right. Any questions about any items on surplus lists? If not, I will make a motion that we approve the items as listed for surplus. Can I get a second?
I'll start, yeah.
Thank you, Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right, surplus passes. All right, curriculum adoption calculus.
More, it's heavy enough. Right?
Can we take a, take a five-minute break? We'll go back at eight thirty-seven. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I finished that whole water and I was wondering. We back on?
Yep.
Okay, welcome back, thank you. So we need a little break before calculus, here we go, all right.
All right, so there are, or is a couple of pre calc books and a couple of calculus books. One was a thing, math adoption that occurred over the summer of twenty twenty. That we hadn't worried about adopting a new calculus, pre calculus materials as because they were E W U courses, so East Washington University courses, and we are going to be required to use their text and so and Justin Robert was the one teaching those courses and he and I had talked and like, no, I don't need any new materials, we're just gonna use what E W U provides. And I've got this, Justin, that's it's no big, so that's great. Well, fast forward, things happen. And we have, we have a branding teacher and I came to you at the beginning, beginning of the year toward, toward the end of September and the, the teacher is teaching pre calc and calculus is like, okay, I have everything that that Justin had, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to me because everybody has their own kind of system. So you know, she asked if we could, we could look at some calculus, pre calculus, we called around to some schools. And we had lifted this program previously as well. And so we brought this on as a pilot. Most calculus and pre calculus curriculums do not have teacher guides as part of it because most of those textbooks are college based. Textbooks, there is no, there is no teacher guide for college based textbooks. It's not, it's not worth the cost of the make these, right? So thi- this is one of the few that actually has an entire set of teacher guides behind it. It was within, and then so besides doing the pilot, we also got the teacher for, she volunteered to do four Saturdays in a row, six hours of training with the program. And has fallen in love with the materials and believes that these activity based lessons and materials, kids, kids just kind of went from what they were doing and just have blossomed in into this. In fact, she told me today as I was sneaking out of her room, she's like, hey, did we put on the quotes? Enough for two cap classes of pre calc? In one year, this teacher has gone from nine students simply out to where she's gonna have over forty kids in pre calc next year.
Wow, that's great.
So I, I think, you know, when we talk about instructors, not programs, instructors make a big deal, giving her the tools. So she can make this deal. Is, is, is super important. So the, the materials are their materials, the materials are great, they align with the other materials that we're using in algebra one, geometry and algebra two. A very similar philosophy through, throughout. And students seem to, seem to gravitate and enjoy the materials because the material is really ask the students to really solve problems together. So there is this togetherness, there is this, this, you need to solve on your own as well, but you know, solving problems is a community based thing, right? And anytime you get in a job that you're gonna be solving, solving problems, especially ones that are gonna need calculus, pre calculus. You're rarely going to be doing those on your own. There's gonna be other people checking your work and whatnot, and you're gonna have to be collaborative in it. So they've really enjoyed, enjoyed the program. Now, the, the program does, has a totally online text. So you know, at this point, what we were looking at is just a classroom set of textbooks. And the online version, access to the online version for over the next seven years until the next adoption cycle. Would be, and so that's all wrapped up into the price that you see it, see up there. And the textbook, they have had these textbooks since October. They, they don't, but they've been open much because they really rely on the, on the virtual within class and the students and pre calc, we actually prefer the, prefer the virtual over the, over the hard, but we still want to make sure we have the hard textbook available for students as well.
So is that just because that's their way of
Yeah.
learning?
Yeah.
Because me, I would prefer that.
Oh, I know.
I would, I would have this book open so that I can put my hands on it.
Yeah.
And
Yeah. And that book is so accessible that I, I went right into her room, went right to bookcase and grabbed these right off the bookcase and and, and went, so kids have, have accessibility to those. I did grab some toward the one end. They, other books, four or five other ones look like the spine has been opened on them. These, these ones just have not at this point, but so what we'd be looking at is, you know, forty, forty five pre calc books. And then twenty calculus books is really what we're looking at because we haven't had anything larger than about fifteen or sixteen in calculus in the twenty plus years I've been here. That, that's a fairly decent number. And but pre, pre calc to have, you know, about every other year, we would at times have thirty five to forty kids in, in pre calc and need to do two sections. So I wasn't expecting that second section this fast. I figured it was gonna take at least one more year, but the fact that we have that many kids signed up, it also means that we have that many students that are choosing to stay at high school to take math, then, then jump off to running, start to take math, which is which is always a good thing because then, you know, a lot of times the pre calc students are some of your leaders in your building and it's nice to keep that, some of that leadership and maturity in your building as well.
What are the prerequisites to move out of, I guess, algebra two, then you go to pre calculus, right?
Yes.
Or, yeah.
Yes.
So what are the pre recs to move into pre pre calculus?
Algebra two.
Just algebra two? Is there a certain GPA they have to have? Or it just in?
Yeah, you have to pass.
You just have to pass?
Yep.
Okay. And that's same for calculus also, right?
Okay, that's pre calc to get into calculus.
Okay.
Justin, I I may have missed something in the get up here, but we have books. Kids are using the online versions. And you're asking for thirteen thousand dollars to buy more books that the kids aren't using. Books and it includes the online version, so they bundle it together. Oh, so you have to buy the book, you have to, you can't just buy the online, yeah. We, we can just buy the online. What I will tell you is we are, we are not necessarily at a, at a point where I think that would be good to just buy only the online and not have texts available. So.
Well, I'm like this guy, I would use this too, but kids not using it at all, or they're using it sometimes?
Sometimes, okay, sometimes.
In some kids, a lot of the time.
Yeah.
But it's
Is that, is that some? Is that sometimes worth thirteen thousand dollars?
Well, and
I understand it's online stuff, isn't it?
The, the textbooks, the textbooks are probably about four or five thousand of that.
Okay.
Of that thirteen, the rest of it is the online. And teacher guides. That's right, I think the thirteen was all for books, so we're gonna say.
No, it's not, no, it's not all for books. And we get that for how many years? You said seven?
Yeah, we'll have that, we'll have that for seven years.
Seven years.
Yep. So yeah, you're, you're looking for, you know, two courses, two thousand bucks a year to, for you know, potentially sixty kids a year. So. We come back next.
Is there a way that we can drop the number of books, maybe to cut the price off a little bit? I mean, I know, you know, I, I, I'm seeing what I'm, I'm listening to what he says, you know, we, we need to have books. I agree with you. We need to have books. Every, everybody learns a little bit different. But is there a way that we can cut down however many numbers of books?
What I would tell you is I'd cut this number down already. So I don't come to you and give you a bone up number. So I, I've cut, I've cut the numbers, I've cut the numbers down to where, where we need. So I, I also calculated in over seven years, there's gonna be some that go missing, some that don't get returned. And so that we don't have to do this onesie twosie purchase and I gotta find the copyright of this book from that year in order to match the set, right? So this, this, this is the cut down version. So an original version was, was closer to twenty. So.
Twenty thousand, not twenty.
Yes.
Twenty nine. One of the things that we often have for combinations for students also is like they have a book at home and I have a book at school. So sometimes, you know, maybe half the students don't use a book at all, but maybe I have a student or two in a class that teaches too. So there, there's, there's that that difference as well.
And you can't use that excuse, I forgot my book at school?
Right.
Are you in a discussion?
Oh, and she said, please, 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 pretty please.
The last pretty. Well, on that, I hear emotion. The pre calculus and calculus books.
I'll move.
Thank you, Michael. I have a second.
I'll take it.
Thank you, Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any posts? All right. Pretty please passes.
All right, so this, the, the next, next item on the agenda is the nine twelve social studies. At the last meeting, a meeting before last, when I shared with you guys the middle school materials from T C I history live. Two of the books from the same publisher are here. So everything I told you about, the online version and the Spanish reading and the things that Lauren Morgan told you about the history live. At the last meeting, all the same stuff in those first two classes at the high school. So the, the two books, the, the geography alive and the history live world connections. That is the freshman and sophomore texts that are being, being recommended. So I'm like the last time I did, I was able to get copies of these ones and, and have them available for you guys to, to peruse and look through, look through some things in hand here. So that, that would be how the first two courses at the high school would, would, would go. The the white binders that are sitting on the table is the US history text. It's a, it's a two volume, it's called the American YAP. It is the, the text that E W U is requiring for US history class. And come to find out, it is actually the history text that many, many of the colleges and universities are, are using because it's a, it's a free text produced by Stanford University in a conglomeration of three hundred and fifty historians have gotten together to, to build this text. Our, the E W U course would use the entire two volumes because the E W U course is supposed to start from colonial and go up to present. That is the scope of the course. The, the scope of the non E W U course, which would be what we would call for better sake, regular US history in our, in our high school. Starts with civil war and goes up through the, through, through present because our eighth grade takes care of colonial up to, up to reconstruction. And so the high school starts back at civil war, does a quick civil war reconstruction and then jumps into the, to the next section. So between eighth grade or tenth grade. They, they get the full scope. And that way, what it does is it allows us to go much, much deeper at both eighth grade and tenth and eleventh grade. With, with, with the history. And we've been doing that now for, I don't know, twenty, twenty five years. That's been kind of the, the route of, of the, of the history there. So with the American YAP, the regular history would actually use chapter fourteen on. So it uses, I think it's the last two chapters of volume one. What, how, how that works? The one, there are a few nice things about the American YAP besides, there are some teacher, online teacher guides and things which, which is very uncommon, but because it's being used by so many high schools. There's a lot of materials that are being created in, in the background for teachers to be able to use essay prompts, you know, teacher guys' lessons, discussion questions, things, things like that with, with the, with the, with the YAP. It's PDF, so we can print any pages we want, don't want. It can, the entire volume can be dropped into a student's Google classroom and be downloaded right to their Chromebook. No internet needed whatsoever to access the textbook once they download it. Okay, which I think is actually
Yeah.
Yeah. And because it is PDF. We have, we have apps available and we'll read the text systems, we'll read the text systems in Spanish, even though it's in English, we can translate it into Spanish fairly easily using the Google Translate. And the, the, the one thing that, that the US history teachers know at the high school, and actually we'll have a couple of new teachers teaching US history at, at, at the high school, a couple of new hires. They they, they absolutely know that the readability of the text is probably at level twelve grade, it is, it is a high readability because it is, it is typically used as a college text. But the department feels that they can do the necessary reading scaffolds in order to help students access the, the reading. So no matter what your reading level is, they will be able to, to, to do some things to help, help, help students access that, that high level. And I think the, the, the other thing is that, I, I don't know about, about you, but you know, reading the textbook is like handing over a giant US history book to a kiddo and say, this is what we're doing for the year, kind of just takes all the fun out of history, right? Doesn't make history cool as it could be. So I think what, what they have found is they, they supplemented a little bit with this over the last couple of years, especially during, during COVID when we were removed. Because we didn't have access to some US materials. They've been able to just use excerpts out of, out of here and kids seem to engage a lot more with the text when they only give it three to four pages. And then the, you know, there's not like turn to page four hundred and sixty four, and we're gonna read to four hundred and ninety two, right? So that's just not how a textbook's gonna get used. That's just not engaging with kiddos. So the, so the, the YAP is, is great, we can order copies of volumes. They're actually twenty five dollars a volume, which actually isn't a bad price. The other thing is because it is PDF, we can, we can get ahold of a, of a printing vendor and see what they would charge us to, to bind up some classroom sets so that they're, you know, they won't be sitting in binders in classrooms like this because kids will tear through those like no other time, right? So we'll find, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to find some ways to make sure we have classroom sets and whatnot, but I think it's a really accessible text. And, and the chapters will just keep growing because if you didn't know, history keeps, keeps adding to itself. So the text isn't gonna get any shorter, so to speak. So.
That, that's actually a question I was having, looking through here.
Yeah.
Like they're having like countries when they gained their independence that stopped in like two thousand seventeen or something. So with, with these, I'm sure the history too. They keep adding to them.
Yes, so that, that would be, you know, the other thing with with the, you know, these bound fancy glossy books, right? I mean, once you, once you print them and you have them.
Right.
They're kind of frozen and in history, that's not, not the greatest, but the other thing I would, I would remind you about history live is they will continue to update the online version. So, you know, at a certain point, if we want to go back and re up to the next copyrighted printed version, we can do that, but the online text of T C I will continue to be updated.
Okay, is that the same with the geography one or my?
Yes, yeah, geography is the same, same too. In fact, the, the geography, I believe they're coming out with a new, there's a twenty twenty three copyright that they'll be printing, so there'll, there'll be some more things, but countries and independence are constantly changing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, you know, we, we may, you know, we may or may not have some changes in the geography map in the next couple of months, we'll see, which is unfortunate, right? So you know, even, even the maps that are in there right now, that they're more historical artifacts already than they are, you, you know, sometimes true. But, but sometimes those maps are actually really important to look, look at. And now let's bring up the current Google map of where the lines are. Let's do some comparisons based on only twenty seventeen when that map was printed. You know, so the other, the other text that I don't have, for you and I was unable to get a, a copy of it, is, is a text that's been in print actually since continues printing in addition updates since nineteen seventeen. And it's the recruiters' American government. It is gold standard of civics textbooks pretty much since nineteen eighty. After its first, first edition. So it's been in, and we have used the McGruders in civics as a textbook. I can't remember a time in which this district hadn't adopted McGruders as a, as its text. We have two thousand ten, two thousand eleven copies in the library right now. I could have brought you those copies. There is an updated twenty twenty three coming out that has all the bells and whistles on the electronic backside. And so that, that is, that, that's, that's a text that civics doesn't necessarily change. You know, civics is civics. And so that they have updated some pictures, updated some infographics and things in there. But there's not necessarily wholesale changes from the, from the twenty eleven. It's just the twenty ten, twenty eleven books are pretty darn ratty. Through, through the use of, you know, ten years. And so it, it, it is time to, to, you know, redo the, redo the textbook fleet with, with that one. And, and what, and whatnot. So, but with all of these textbooks in the nine through twelve, we would definitely be, be looking at purchasing classroom sets and then having one extra set in the library for checkout. So really what we're looking at is a hundred and twenty textbooks. A typical adoption prior to this, we would have done two hundred to two hundred and twenty five textbooks. So what we're looking at is scaling that back to about a hundred and twenty textbooks per course. That would, that would allow us to, if we had up to three teachers teaching the course, which most of the time we only have two, but sometimes we have, we add a third because they, you know, a single you know, you know, we have too many freshmen this year, I have to have one more teacher teach geography. So we want to have that third set and then also that set in the library so that if kiddos do need a book at home, they can check that book out at home. Or if they need it overnight and they don't have the internet access, they're still able to check that book out overnight or for a week and, and complete their project and whatnot. So we, we definitely want to make sure we solve the access. But able to drop about a hundred textbooks per course off the cost of an adoption. So. And then just like I, I had said before, the couple of things we've run into in our last couple of history adoptions and even in E L A adoption is companies stopping their online access. Like, they're like, oh no, we offered that for seven years and we're no longer gonna, we're shutting down the website. So T C I history live is, is going to allow us to buy the access through the duration of the, and they guarantee So TCI History Live is, is going to allow us to buy the access through the duration of the, and they guarantee us. Access to the book. So that, that is another, that's actually a big uh, point, especially um, after twenty. Twenty-one school year, um, uh, and trying to scramble around some other, you know, things and trying to get some access from online books and whatnot. And we can, we had to do some switching and, right? Um, and, and so, um, I'm, I'm actually fairly excited about History Live. Training uh, for History Live. Uh, for middle school and high school, we'd be looking at August fifteenth in the morning. Then the rest of their day would be spent planning with those materials and getting ready for the start of the school year. And then. August sixteenth would be their training for the D B Qs, which is the uh, uh, document-based questions. Uh, kind of quest performance tasks, so they'd be trained in the morning and then they would continue that are, they're planning for the, for the new year with new materials. It, it does take a little bit for people to get together and, and uh, you know, plan, plan some things out. The other thing is we will be adding new teachers to both of those teams, so there, there will be um, at least uh. At least one new social studies teacher that would be added uh, at the middle school and there will be. Um, two, four, hmm, three bodies. Of social studies teachers added to the high school, three people that will be added to the team. So, as, as we've had some, some turnover. Uh, in the social department, so uh, really important for those August fifteenth, sixteen days to get together. They get to know each other, they get to gel as a team, they get to work together, they get to plan together. So that we get a really good start to the school year with, with folks, so. But at this time, you know, I'll take questions you guys have, and I'm not asking for any approval, the, the approval. I'll, I'll bring all the quotes and everything and for approval to, to the next board meeting. So this gives you time between now and next board meeting, that if you have questions about any of the materials. You go ahead and give me a call, you email me whatever, I will find the answers for it if I don't know about it, I have to top my head, but I can also take questions now, so.
My only question I have is. And how many years will it take us to? Move away from books? Altogether? Or predominantly?
I think in the next decade. I, I, to, to be honest with you, I, I think with this. Th- th- this is an evolution of the human brain more than anything else. Um, whereas. You prefer a book, right?
Yep.
I, 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 I pre- I prefer the, I prefer the book when it comes time to reading and whatnot. But I, I'm finding myself, I'm, I'm trying to force myself a little bit hybrid. Yeah, I think what, what. The human, the human brain is gonna have to shift how it learns. For evolutionary, we are. Print. We, we, right now, we've still learned that are based on print. It's going to take time. Before we totally get there. Now, what I, the other thing I would tell you is I think some publishers are gonna force a hand. A little bit in this, because they're gonna stop printing.
Yeah.
Or the, the cost of the textbook is going to be so expensive. That if you want it printed, the textbooks are no longer gonna cost us seventy-five or eighty dollars a piece. They're gonna cost us a hundred and eighty-five dollars because it's a special order.
Right.
Right? So, um, so I think there's that evolution of. The human brain that has to occur. And then it'll end up being that financial piece that will occur. Um, okay, and so where do those two start to meet? I, I still think. I, I still think we're, we're. Ten year, eight to ten years out. So, but we're, but I, I would also say. We're, we're, we're closer, right? So, um, in, in uh, three of our science classes at the high school, we don't have a textbook.
Okay, I was gonna ask you that question, but I didn't wanna put you on the spot, or you might not know, which classes do we have already that we don't have textbooks?
I, I, I shouldn't know.
I'm the curriculum director, so.
So, but, but like, so for instance, at, at high school science, we, we don't have a textbook for our chemistry, physics. And, and biology, we do for AP biology, we do for AP physics, we have textbooks. But for our general three courses, it is on, it is online, and then teachers print the. The, the text is actually online, so teachers are printing. The excerpts that are needed, if they need kids to do things in class. If it's a short read, they're gonna jump on the computer to it. Not unlike where we're headed with US history, right? That kind of that hybrid, and we are reducing the amount of textbooks quite a bit. But, but we, you know, we do have, we do have courses where there, there's not, it's not as textbook heavy. Um, a- as, as it would be, and now I will tell you that, that, you know, at, at least a couple of phone calls a year, it's like, where's the textbook for that class? Don't you guys have textbooks? Well. I mean, you don't, you can understand, things were, were shifted, things are changing. It, it, it is not, it's, it's, it's not your classroom from that you remember. I mean, it's, it's a very different classroom. And yet, it's still a lot of the same. So, you know, there are certain classes that, and, and I, what I, the other thing I would say is there are still. There are still teachers that are, that are comf- more comfortable having that. That text, right, that physical, you know, in their style of teaching and, 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 and. Right. About things, and then there's other teachers that have learned to, to kind of let go a little bit and, and, and see what this takes us.
Try to transition.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and so I think, you know, as we continue to hire new. Younger or teachers that are willing to a- adapt and, and transition. Then I think we start to see more of that. Um, but you know, I also wanna make sure that, you know, while, while we still can. Um, you know, I'm always trying to reduce the amount of textbooks and make sure we increase, but I also know there's that, that digital divide. That we have in our community. We, we have the people at Comcast of four hundred megabytes of, of internet, right? And then we have folks that live out, you know, live out in gate that have a hotspot of one point five meg and they couldn't stream a.
Yeah, I got it.
You know, I mean, ping pong wouldn't work, um, from Atari on, on their internet. So, you know, it's, it's, it, it, you know, it's, it's that difference. And so trying to make sure we balance all of that in, in the same way and give the. But I'm absolutely before, and, you know, I think one of the, one of the big things, I, I picked up my backpack the other day and I almost fell over myself. And I'm like, how, at ninety-eight pounds, how do you carry this thing? So, um, it, it was another push for me, um, you know, as, as, as a parent to push to, towards classroom sets of texts. And, and, and uh, let, let's not have kids carrying these um, eight-pound textbooks around when they really don't need to. Um, and when they do need to, great, they can. But if I can, you know, take two, two books out of a kid's bag and it makes, and it makes sense. And re- enlighten that load by sixteen pounds, uh, that's not a bad deal either. So.
Thanks, Jess.
Yep.
All right, we'll look forward to. Two weeks, bro. All right, next item is uh, substitute bill fifty thirty, support student well-being.
Right, we have Laura here to.
So, um, yes. This, and this is tonight just for you to take a look at it and, um, you know, read through it. If you have any questions, let me know if you come up with any questions tonight. But basically, uh, substitute senate bill, um, uh, fifty thirty talks about um, social emotional learning. And as well as the um, applications of our, of our counselors and what they will do in their positions. Um, and so there's, it's, there's a lot of discussion in it about equitable access for students, data collection to ensure that. We know how students are doing and what their social emotional growth looks like. Um, it's really, um, you know, just trying to have a more systematic kind of plan. Um, and using the ASCA standards, which are the American School Counselor Association standards, is kind of the overarching. Um, uh, guideline of this work, and then we have the social emotional. Um, learning standards for the state of Washington that we also need to be following with this. Um, one of the big parts of this bill that's um, getting the most attention is called the eighty-twenty. Which says that school counselors, eighty percent of their time should be used for direct or indirect student services. And then twenty percent of their time can be used for other things such as paperwork and things like that. So the comprehensive school counseling plan is basically compiling what I just said. Um, we've had a counselor P L C all year and putting together, um, our thinking as a district. In regards to what we're going to do moving forward. Um, to really have a very systematic approach district-wide for social emotional learning. Um, we talked about the D S A before, which is our screener for social emotional, using that D S A screener and diagnostic. To determine how students are doing. And then also take the time to be looking at what our counselors are doing in their position and make sure. Um, we're being diligent about how they use their time and ensuring that they're using their time in, in the most appropriate way. So that's the very like short nine, ten version of um, what the, the bill talks about. And then what the plan talks about. So for, for what we have to approve, what, what, what is, what our requirement is. Is for the board to approve our transition plan for the comprehensive school counseling plan. So you don't actually have to approve the plan, but the transition plan needs to be, this, needs to be before the twenty-two, twenty-three school year starts. And then what you have there is um. Is the transition plan, so. I don't know, um, I, I don't wanna go into much more detail, I'm gonna take a look if you have any question with any of this. At this point, and if you don't, that's fine, um, we'll look at it again next time. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Also in their documents, I believe, is the draft of the.
Policy and procedure in there too.
Yeah, it is the first reading now, so this, we consider their first reading, the policy would move to the consent agenda. In a couple of weeks for approval. So really, in the end, there's three things I believe that need to get approved before the start of the next school year, correct?
So there's the transition plan and then the policy and there's like a resolution.
Resolution. Yeah, so you're gonna see three things. Um, in upcoming meetings. Um, for your approval related to this. Substitute Senate Bill fifty thirty, man. My computer.
Oh.
The concerns about uh. Capacity to meet the new standard, the eighty-twenty standard specifically, uh, the, the, their funding. This will notice that to.
Um.
Of course not, but uh.
No, not, there isn't, but what we're doing, and I've been working with the counselors all year in our professional learning community. We started one this year, and what we're doing is it's called the SCUDA. And right now, what we're, it's a school counselors' use of time allocation or something like that. So right now, what they're doing, their approval is to take next year to really look at what their time and how they're using their time. And what might be areas that we can look at to adjust how their time is being used. Um, we may need to do some reallocation of expectations for different people in our system. Um, there are lots of different ways that districts are doing this to determine how to make sure we, we fall into that eighty-twenty. But our plan is to really look at it this next school year and figure out where we're at before we start saying, oh, we have to make all these changes. Because we don't, we don't know what those changes are yet. Until we can take some time and figure out. And there are different times of year where counselors' expectations are ebb and flow. I mean, counselors at the high school in May, it's, you know, testing and speaking is to, across the line. You know, we wanna make sure our seniors are graduating, we wanna make sure people have credits, so um, looking at it throughout the year to really determine how time is being used.
I have a question about. Um. I mean, I just need to understand better, but. Is there a bright line between the school counselors and the? Drug and alcohol counselors and the mental health counselors and folks who bring in from the outside, are they all working together or are they viewed as separate?
So. Yes. To all of those things. What I, what I mean, what I mean by that is I'm gonna, I'm gonna take, like, we have the, the RISE program that I know Maggie's talked with you about. Um, and the RISE program is, is kind of the, the agency that, that brings everybody together. So, um, when we're looking at student needs and things like that, there, depending on the level of need or the support, um, that's kind of, that's the. The shoot that takes the student to the right place, so like, it might be the mental health support, it might be support with the counselor in another way. Um. They are, as this last couple of years has. Has. Really made it more difficult to be collaborating as much as, as, as they would like to be, those different groups. Um, now that we're back on campus and around each other, that's happening more of the time and, and getting those services aligned. But honestly, this plan, part of the goal of this plan is to make sure that's really clearly structured across the district.
Good, that, that's kind of what I was looking for, thank you.
Yeah, but the eighty-twenty part does impact any of our mental health. Yeah, counselors.
But the school.
It's the school counselors that are impacted by this legislation.
Yeah. Yeah, I think people's views of what those people do are all over the map, and so, yeah.
I never saw my council on the rise.
I'm just gonna say we have some pretty awesome teachers in this district, and I just. Uh, their passion about doing this right and making sure that we're really serving students and, and. The best ways to help them be successful, it's really inspiring.
Well, I know my wife is pretty good about getting back to me whenever I email her. With counseling questions, you know, pretty good about it, I'll give her that, you know.
So, any other questions tonight? Well, this will come back in a couple of weeks, probably right after simple study, so.
They might have to arm wrestle for.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item, continental operations, first reading of policy sixty-five eighty.
So, um, school districts are required to adopt this policy. And the, the funny thing about it, if they're. We can look at it that way, is that we have been living. Um. Really the essence of the policy for the last. Eighteen months, and so it really is how do you continue operations in a midst of some type of crisis? So, um, what we'll ask you to do is first reading tonight, we'll ask you to adopt the policy. The policy references a plan. And our plan is in um. Pieces. So we, we have the information, the majority of the information that's required in the plan. Um, are housed in various places, separate documents. And this really requires it all to be brought together into a single um, place. And it will be quite an effort to, to get all those pieces together. And so this is one that made me, as you were talking earlier, Michael, about a security planner. Um, in some ways, this is similar work. Um, and we had, we've been giving thought to the fact that we need to contract with somebody to help pull this, all these pieces together. And that may be not contracted on the outside, it, we may have people with a capacity within our system that we, we would pay an extra stipend to, to do this.
Support.
Because you need a level of understanding of the particulars of a district's operations in order for this really to make sense. So, they'll be asked again a couple of weeks from now to approve the policy that says there will be a plan.
Thank you. All right, next item is lease surplus property at Head Start. This is a. Resolution to lease property E S D one thirteen for the. Sound to Harbor Early Learning Program. Ten-year annual local agreement.
So it was time, our ten-year lease agreement was up, and there's some terminology that's changed in the last ten years. And so they, they cleaned up a variety of things. For those of you who aren't familiar, um, we have a Head Start facility. Um, they're portables that sit on the campus of Grand Mount Elementary School. And, um, the portables themselves uh, belong to. Sound to Harbor Early Learning Head Start. Um, and they, I guess, what is it, a dollar?
A ton.
A dollar a month to have that on our facility. I mean, on our property, that facility on our property. And so, you know, it, it is really in service to make sure kids get an early childhood educational experience. And having it close proximity to our school system is, is helpful for families and. We, we cooperate on many occasions with them and providing services to students who are served maybe in our special education program and their. Head Start program. Um, so it's great to have them. But it does require a lease agreement.
Where are the, where are the portables at again?
They are to the um, west of Grand Mount Elementary. So there's a, a service lane that goes along that side.
Yep, 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 yep.
We wish they were with the primary school. But when they were first put in place, the primary school was here in this building. And there was, and we couldn't add any more portables to this property. And so the best next place to put them was next to the three, four, five building. And so that's why they were located there. And then it didn't make sense to re, to move them.
So, there's so little, all their place stuff's inside, right? Do they have it outside?
Playground, it's all fenced in. Yes. Yeah. It's about forty years of. If you approve this, it will be forty years of agreements between the. Program and the district to. Lease our property. Purpose of this.
Oh.
Dollar a month, huh?
Very funny. Questions more, right? If not, can I get a motion to, uh, renew the lease surplus property to Head Start agreement, June twenty twenty-two to May twenty thirty-two?
I'll, I'll move forward.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Repose?
We're not gonna.
Here's, here we come.
I hear you. More to kick off the little kid.
Never have enough preschools.
All right, we have come to our second opportunity for public inputs. If they, if anybody's online that would like to, nope, okay. Well, uh. We are.
I have something to say, so there was a comment that was made on Facebook a week or two ago. And I decided to comment to the lady, I'm like, because it had to do with security. I said, you need to bring that to the next board meeting. I don't, honestly, don't remember what her name was. And she said she was gonna be here, so I was expecting her to be somebody on there and bring her concerns to the board. But I, yes, it wasn't, um, that's, I was, I was waiting for you to say, yeah, there was one person there to, to say, and I was like, just.
Yeah, we, we did have one person that, that sent us a letter, responded to that person.
Oh, okay.
I think so, I don't know if it's the same person or not, but.
Yeah.
So.
No one?
Okay, uh, nothing else, we are adjourned.